All right. Hello, everybody. I'd like to start the Hockington Town Council Workshop of January 19th, 2021 to order, open a workshop to continue discussion or discussions regarding proposed amendments to the zoning district use table to amend permitted uses for solar energy systems throughout the town of Hockington and possibly change or and/or amend the review and approval procedures for all solar energy systems within the town of Hockington as submitted by Peter Squares, Esquire, on behalf of his clients, Dr. Thomas and Cynthia Skolko, including but not limited to discussions regarding potential impacts to the photovoltaic energy systems ordinance and the farm-based photovoltaic solar energy system ordinance. For further details on the proposed amendments submitted by Attorney Squares, please visit the town's website. Now, good evening, Attorney Squares. I would like to see, and as you had, weren't able to stay all the way to the end of the meeting last, last week, I'd like to offer you up any, any comments or concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was present for a large portion of the meeting last time, and I thought you were moving through, you know, I think you went efficiently, but yeah, yeah, I had a lot of good substantive discussion. The only point that I would bring up is that I know there was a draft prepared by your town planning staff, and, you know, I think, you definitely want to get the insight of your town planning staff, but what would be helpful to us is if there was a redlined version showing the items that have changed between our original draft and, and the town planning staff's draft, or an overview of the changes. You know, from, from my perspective, the two largest changes, which from my review looks like were also part of your planning staff's draft, was the limitation of solar to the manufacturing zone, you know, recognizing it as a manufactured use, and also just recognizing the precedence of approval provisions in the ordinance itself. It looked like those two things were still in it, and, you know, from my perspective, that's the biggest substantive portion of the ordinance amendment that we proposed. But just some of the, there's a lot of details, and, you know, if there was possible to get some type of, either a redlined or overview of the items changed, that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squares. Okay, with that said, you know, I, I've, I've really had some time to think about that, and I, I would, and I'm going to propose that we, we go back in what we do, not, not saying we, we did not have any, you know, constructive discussion and came to certain consensus and stuff, but I do agree for transparency and, you know, and for everyone involved that we do need a, a redline document that, that we need to go through and go through the actual Skolko proposal here to, just, just to clarify what has been removed and what hasn't, you know, been removed. So I just want to make that statement, and also at the last meeting, I did not give the, the opportunity to the public to speak. So at this point, I'm, I'm going to allow them to, to make any comments. So if you have any comments, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. Joe? Joe Moreau?
Good evening. This is Joe Moreau from Old Depot Road. How's everyone?
Good, Joe. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Chris Shid for, for taking the time to make some improvements. So it was much easier to get on this time around. I just wanted to mention that I want to give you four quick examples why we need to make some changes to our current PSES. There was proposed solar project at 336 Woodville Road in July of 2019. Someone from that defeated project as of two weeks ago still owes our town around $2,900 in fees that were not reimbursed. That was 18 months ago. The attorney for that project has another proposed, proposal before the planning board to build houses at Brushy Brook. Another example is 65 Palmer Circle. Solar project has been generating power since December 31st, 2019. This spring is the third planting season, and not one plant, shrub, or tree has been planted to buffer the project. Still issues with the retention pond. Another issue this past Friday was with the gate being unlocked. There's a phone number on there. I call that number, it's a non-working number. This is the second incidence for this gate being unlocked. The third thing I want to mention is the Maxon Hill Road solar project. That has had issues from the beginning. The truck traffic on Maxon Hill Road still continues. On Tuesday, January 5th, around 3:00 PM, flatbed trailer truck was parked idling on the side of that narrow road without a flag to control passing vehicles. For about a half hour, they were waiting for someone to unlock the gate, and then the truck could not back onto the property, so the piece of equipment was driven to the truck with all that noise of it backing up. The contractors worked on that project whenever they wanted to. I have witnessed this myself. I was there one morning at 6:30 AM. At 6:45, a fuel delivery truck pulled up to fuel all the equipment. Your electrical contractors working on Sundays. Above us and others are now dealing with water runoff. At the last planning board meeting, we were told it would be fixed in April. Last Saturday, I was there at 9:39 AM in the morning, and you could see the water running down that hill under the gate, onto the road. The director Butters mailbox was completely flooded where they couldn't even get to their mail. This week, our zoning board of review will listen to an appeal concerning two of the conditions made by our planning board for the Frontier Road project. I listened to the attorney for that project. I continue to point out what was in or not in our PSES. I believe they are appealing the work schedule and the side setbacks. That's just a guess on my part. I would like to suggest work schedules in our PSES of Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, no weekends. By starting at 8:00 AM, it would reduce the number of children waiting for school buses. Also, it should be clear there will be no exceptions. It was announced there would be no more truck traffic on Maxon Hill Road once an interior road was completed. A couple of exceptions were made during the revamp of this road, and I understand that. What I don't understand is why the truck traffic continues today. My other suggestion is that solar projects are not allowed to generate power until the project is completed. The town would do an inspection, and if the project is being complete, building and zoning will sign off on the necessary paperwork. I can't stress enough that complete is complete with no exceptions. I'm currently working with a rep from National Grid to see how this can be accomplished. The last few days, I've called five town employees to find out who is notified in our town when a solar project starts to generate power. No one is notified by the developer. One employee told me of all the research that is done, and also of going to a solar site to listen for the hum to see if it is activated. Even when on New Year's Eve, that is dedication, and our town employees should not have to take such extreme measures. The developer must provide to our town when the project is generating power. I would also suggest that we do a complete audit of all the solar projects in town to make sure that the town is receiving the necessary revenue. I spoke to Anthony in building and zoning, and he suggested, which I thought was a great idea, that the town should have a bond amount for any work that's not completed, so that if we had a bond established, works not completed, for example, 65 Palmer Circle, if there is $10,000 worth of plants, then that amount would be deducted from the bond, and then the balance would be reimbursed, but the town would control that portion of it. Myself and many other residents and town employees work to make changes to improve our current PSES. This is our town and our primary residence. In my opinion, we don't need someone who lives in New York as their primary residence to make so many changes to the current PSES. Yes, we can always make some changes to any documents to improve it, and I agree with that. The initial draft was a drastic change, in my opinion. I am glad the farm viability was removed so that we can review it separately. The true farmers in our town need help, and those who are taking advantage of the current ordinance need to handle separately. I understand the family in New York has ties to Wesley, and I get that. What I don't get is that there were large solar projects, as we all know, Route 216, Maxon Hill Road, Old Depot, Brushy Brook, Skunk Hill, the list goes on and on. Maybe I missed something, but I never saw any involvement from the New York family until the Stone Ridge project on Palmer Circle was discussed. I understand some of this land, but the family's land. I did listen to a gentleman who identified himself as the brother-in-law speak at one of the meetings. In closing, we made major changes to the old PSES to stop the proposed zone changes from RFR 80 to special commercial for solar on large tracts of residential property. An example is the 3%, or three acres. The majority of our town is on wellwater, the majority of our town is on wellwater and septic systems, which is not attracted to bringing business into our town. If the solar project is done correctly, currently zoned commercial property, it should be allowed because it would be revenue for our town. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
Could I make a comment before the board, the council response?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I would just, Mr. Moreau-
Say your name for the record there.
Steven Sype, the town solicitor. Mr. Moreau identified specifically several projects, and, and we should not tonight be talking in specifics about any particular project or any developer. No one has been noticed, no one has received any notice that any discussion like that would take place tonight. So I would advise us to just stick with discussing the ordinance as it applies to the whole town.
Thank you. Eric, you got, Eric Bibler?
Hi.
Yep.
Here. Um, you know, I think Attorney Squares was very diplomatic in his comments and asking for a redline, a marked copy. You know, I attended the entire meeting last Monday. I feel like I know my way around this ordinance pretty well. I had a heck of a time understanding what was going on, and it wasn't until last Friday when Mr., when the town planner's memo was posted to the town website, five days after Thursday or Friday, I guess, three or four, five days after the meeting, that it was possible to know what was going on. And to my understanding, what the town council did on Monday, and I don't really blame the council, because I think they got this memo over the weekend, you know, just shortly before, what the council did was effectively substitute the town planner's rewrite of the ordinance or the ordinance proposed by the proposers. I have a huge problem with that for several reasons, and I think it deprived the public, and it deprives the proposer, proposers, and it deprives the town and other people, like the planning board, of the ability to make, you know, meaningful contribution here. So first of all, the advertised topic of the hearing that's coming up and workshops, the advertised topic is the ordinance that was proposed by, you know, Hockington property, which is their right, whether they reside in New York or not. And the progress on either, you know, the, the problem before the town council would be either to adopt or reject or amend that proposed ordinance. So the working draft that the town council compiles as you move along here really needs to be based on the proposed ordinance, not on Mr. Lambfier's rewrite, you know, with the, with the building and planning staff. But the real issue is, you know, I'm 63 years old as of last week, and I've spent 40 years looking at these documents, and I have never seen an instance where someone did an extensive rewrite of a draft and did not provide a marked copy to all of the stakeholders so that they could understand what had been deleted, what had been added, what had been amended. The public didn't have a marked copy. The town council didn't have a marked copy, and the proposers didn't have a marked copy, and obviously other boards and committees didn't have a marked copy. So the implication of that really comes home when I read now the cover letter from the town planner to the Hockington Town Council. No summary of the proposed changes was presented to the town council, just a clean draft where it was impossible to know what was omitted unless you have some kind of superhuman ability to compare two drafts simultaneously. And I'll call the summary here in the cover letter of what this purports to be. Accessory solar energy systems from having to go to the zoning board for a special use permit, and provides for accessory solar energy systems on farms to be reviewed by the planning board under development plan review as in the past. All other solar energy systems are proposed to be reviewed as major land development. Well, that doesn't say the half of what occurred in this draft. For one thing, the, not just, it's just not just projects on farms in the residential zone that no longer, Mr. Lambfier's draft, are subject to a special use permit. None of the projects, in my reading, are any longer subject to special use permits. He also added back, in the zoning district use table, made the commercial zone eligible for development by, for solar development. The setbacks that were proposed in the Skolko ordinance were dramatically reduced, and the existing provision in our PSES that limits the lot coverage for solar systems on RFR 80 property that is rezoned of a lesser of 3% or three acres, that now has become a lot coverage of 75%. So I don't, I still am sitting here tonight without a marked copy in front of me. Mr. Squares doesn't have a marked copy. The council doesn't have a marked copy. And I, I object strenuously to the idea of moving forward to debate the merits of Mr. Lambfier's draft. I think the appropriate course of action would probably be to postpone the workshop until we have, first of all, a marked copy, have Mr. Lambfier's memo in the form of a marked copy so that we can mark to show changes. Secondly, I think that the town council should ask the town planner to provide a separate written summary in bullet point form that lists, summarizes the substantive changes that he has proposed to the proposed ordinance, and also gives the reasons why. That was extremely troubling last Monday, too, in that items were being changed, but no justification for changing them was being offered. And then going forward, I would propose, I know the town council did some work on the first half of the draft, but I would propose that if, if that's to become the working draft, those proposed changes should be compared to the Skolko proposal, and the working draft should be, should show changes to the ordinance that was proposed, not changes to the town planner's ordinance. You know, the town planner wrote the existing ordinance, and these, there are weaknesses in the existing ordinance that have been repeatedly exploited by developers, which is precisely the reason why this proposed ordinance was privately commissioned and offered was to rectify some of those weaknesses. So I think that, to be fair to the proposers and the council and the public and everyone else, we should deal with the advertised ordinance, ordinance, and we should show the changes, and all of this should be put on the town website and made freely available so that members of the public that take the trouble to attend these meetings can comment intelligibly about what's going on. If you do produce that marked draft of the changes that you've already seemed to have reached some consensus on, I would just like to say that the council should take that with a grain of salt and should not feel like they can't revisit some of those discussions in the first half of the ordinance. You know, once you get a marked draft, and once you find out, you know, what got cut or changed or amended, it's really impossible to make any sense out of this if we don't operate that way. So I hope you'll, I hope you'll share these concerns and adapt the process accordingly. Thanks.
Thank you. Do any other council members have, have any comments before I make my comments?
I do.
Okay, Sharon, go ahead.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say that this process was to gather thoughts from a variety of staff and a variety of, of residents and, and their special interests that they represent. And when we asked planning and zoning to give us their opinions, we never thought that they would come up with 15-page, you know, thing. So in order, in other words, they, they did a lot of changes and recommended a lot of changes. And so last time we met, we were in the process of trying to use that as a beginning. That was not going to be the document, the ending document, of compiling all of these various interest opinions. And since then, I have even different thoughts. So I agree with Eric that we should probably start with Attorney Squares' original proposal, start at the beginning with, with the definitions and the zoning tables, and, and go through that way. And we need to have someone who will be making the changes and being able to submit marked-up documents as we go forward from this point on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sharon.
Bob Marvel here. Can I add?
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
So I, I want to say I concur with, with Counselor Davis on that. I think that I've, I've done enough in my, in my job. I've done enough policies and standards documents that in retrospect, what we should have done was follow the original proposal and just either do redline, as you say, or just add notes to it. So I propose that we follow the original proposal as we go through it, and we can make notes on what people are suggesting for changes or adds or deletions, and we can, we can add that marked-up, notated copy on, on the website for further discussion. I would offer, I, I would be happy to make notes to a copy and provide it after the meeting.
Thank you, Bob. Counselor Gary or Counselor Hurst, any comments?
I would just say, Counselor Scott Billhurst, I agreed as a courtesy to the Skolcos, and William, Mr. Squirtz contacted me. This proposal was put on the agenda at my request, responding to Attorney Squares representing the Skolcos. So I think that's basically what we should, we should be considering with any changes that we get from various sources. But the most important thing that the town council should be doing is not having a private group like the Hockton Citizens Alliance or, or any official proposing a comparison. I think that's why we have a town planner to do that. He's a professional staff person of the town and, which is compensated and, and an unbiased staff member for the town council and the town government. So I think that's the best way to approach it. But as I said, I agreed as a courtesy to the Skolcos through their attorney to sponsor this, and it would seem any proposal should be a discussion of their original proposal and any changes that anybody has, but any, any comparisons or advice should come from our town planner or any appropriate aspect of town government. Not that you don't take public sentiment into consideration of public comment, but I think that's how the town government should operate. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Scott. Counselor Gary, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. Kind of concur with Counselor Hurst and the rest of the counselors. You know, there's, there's, there's two or three different drafts out here. We have the original one. We have the original one from 2019. I think maybe it's, you know, time to take, you know, take a timeout, reevaluate everything. But I do want to see if Jim Lampfier's on. Are you going to be able to, Jim, you on?
Yep. Yeah, Jim's here. Do you want to ask him a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim. You can respond to anything Counselor Hurst has. I mean, excuse me, Counselor Gary, I apologize.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President. Jim Lampfier here, town planner. I've, I've been on the line, and I've heard everything that's been said. I'd just like to say that the, the document that was given to the town council was in no way meant to replace or diminish what the Skolcos have presented to the town. At some point, you are going to be required to have a public hearing on the document as submitted without anybody's edits to it. And the way to approach that, in my opinion, is to go through it exactly from front to back, starting with the definitions. And as, my intention of collaborating with my fellow staff people and giving you this was a conversation between staff and directly to the town council. What, what the town council does with that document is entirely up to the council. I just want to say that I participated in all these workshops. We had, the first two, we had a lot of comments from counselors, from the public. Going into the second workshop, while Mr. Squares admitted that what they submitted to the town needs some work, probably is deserving of some edits, nothing was, nothing from that side was given for the second workshop. Coming out of the second workshop, we're approaching now going into the third workshop, the last one we had. Still, after two workshops and comments, nothing came from Mr. Squares with proposed amendments. So I'm, I'm wondering where we're going into this next third workshop. What, what are we going to talk about? So I got together with staff, we looked at it, and we provided a document basically just for the information of the town council to reflect on, so that when, so that the point in time when they take up the document that the Skolcos gave us in, in the public hearing, they can have that for reference in their mind. It was not, it was given to the town council on a Friday afternoon. I do not have the, it would be, it would be entirely inappropriate for me to even suggest publishing something online before my town counselors even had a chance to see it. This is communication from staff to town council. If we can't communicate internally amongst ourselves, I don't know how we can conduct business. So those are the thoughts, those are our thoughts from staff to the town council. We don't, we don't have to even go into the document that we prepared at, at any length tonight at all if the council doesn't want to. We can do whatever the council wants in, in tonight's workshop. I can produce, if, if I was asked to, I could certainly produce a redline copy of how the draft that we produced, and again now, we had a lot of, we had a lot of edits that were made at the last workshop to the draft that the staff produced. We didn't, we, what we produced was edited. So, and, and we're fine with that. All we're trying to do is facilitate the production of an ordinance. I can clearly see that the town council wants to amend the current PSES ordinance, and it should be. So I was, you know, staff, when we gave you that, that document last Friday, we were acting as advisors to you, your paid advisors. Last, at the last workshop, I was acting as a facilitator to help- Last, at the last workshop, I was acting as a facilitator to help facilitate the production of an ordinance. I'm willing to do that at any point in time or serve the town council in any manner you see fit, okay? I'm not trying to take away somebody's ordinance that they produced for the town. We're just giving you our take on it. Because quite frankly, and again, I think Mr. Squares admitted that himself on several occasions when certain issues were brought up, the ordinance that was given to the town needs some work. For example, do you want every residential customer who wants to put solar on their property to have to spend a couple of thousand dollars, two or $3,000 to go through a special use permit with the zoning board? I mean, I mean, really, I mean, you've got to look at this ordinance that was drafted and see what it was. So it was important for us staff, especially the zoning department, who takes care of the zoning board, to weigh in on that and say, Jesus, you know, I mean, wow, that's going to be a tremendous workload. And I'll tell you, I foresee, if that ever went through, I can foresee the town council is getting an awful lot of phone calls when somebody is prevented from taking advantage of that solar program with National Grid because they're forced now to spend several thousand dollars to go through that permit process. So I mean, so all we did was provide staff input to the town council. Can do whatever it wants with it, can totally take this document and trash it. Or they can keep it just for their, for their own personal use, individual personal use when we go through the Skolco ordinance as proposed, and I'm fine with that. So I'm not trying, you know, staff was not trying to do anything nefarious here. We're trying to facilitate the production of an ordinance because we can clearly see that this needs to get done as soon as possible. So I remain your servant and I'm here, I'm not here to argue with anybody or debate with anybody. I'm here, your servant, and you tell me what you want me to do from here, and I'll just stand by. We don't even need me to take notes. We have a town clerk at these workshops. And our clerk's office is more than capable of making a notation on anything that's talked about. So we don't have to talk about the staff memo anymore. We can immediately go, as soon as you folks want to, we can go to the public hearing and open up the Skolco document and start going through it right from the beginning. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Squares.
I just wanted to respond and say that I definitely appreciate the work that your planner has done. And, you know, my comment at the beginning about a red line draft, I really don't want it to be taken as a criticism of his work because I think at the end of the day, you do need your planning staff to review it and give you advice like he's done. So I don't think there's, I agree with him that, you know, it's a completely appropriate step to take. There was mention about red line drafts coming from ours, from applicants. I mean, we could do that if we were asked to, but I think really at the end of the day, since the council is going to be workshopping it and going to have to take ownership of it, I think, I think the red line draft probably should come from town staff rather than having, you know, our office put forward what, you know, having our office try to carry your intent forward. I think it would be better to have your town officials take your discussion and turn that into written words on the page. But all that being said, I just wanted to put on the record, I wasn't trying to criticize Mr. Lampier, and I hope it didn't come off that way. Because I think, you know, it's definitely going to be critical to this ordinance process to get your town staff to weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, you, I'm going to unmute you. Go ahead, please. Lisa, did you have something to say? I see that your hand is raised.
Hi, this is Lisa Cook Martin. I just want to make sure that when we go forward, yes, we do take notes. Are they copious notes to some extent, yes. But if there's going to be some sort of changes or amendments to the applicant's draft, that's not something we will be doing. That should come from the applicant.
Okay, thank you. So Lisa, are you, you're saying that the applicant, I mean, and forgive me if I misunderstand you.
Well, I know that, well, I want, we do take notes, and you have workshop notes from two previous workshop sessions. But, but we don't, we don't amend the proposal.
Sure.
That proposal came from the applicant. And if they would like to amend their proposals based on what the council input is, then that should come from the applicant and not my office.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, you're just talking about, yes, thank you. Okay, I see two hands up right now, but we are going to continue this workshop after the, then our seven o'clock scheduled meeting. I would like to go through that there, and then I will give you a couple of minutes each to, to say what you need to say, okay? So with that being said, I would like to adjourn the workshop. Do I need a motion to, I don't think I need a motion. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to convene as a town council. I'm going to call the seven o'clock meeting of January 19th, 2021 to order with a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to sit as a licensing board?
So moved, Scott Billhurst, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Bill Hurst, aye.
The motion passes. I'd like to open a hearing on commercial hauler license renewals. Opening a hearing on a renewal of the following commercial hauler licenses. CWPM LLC, 25 Norton Place, Plainville, Connecticut. Easy Waste Systems Incorporated, 67 Ledward Avenue, Wesley, Rhode Island. On Time Disposal, 203 Ashway Road, Bradford, Rhode Island. RPKK Incorporated/RPE Waste Services, 9 Kings Factory Road, Wood River Junction, Rhode Island. Republic Services, Inc., 1080 Airport Road, Fall River, Mass. Sanitation by Quint Perry, 7 Corn, Sweet Corn Lane, Wesley, R.I. Stephen Piccolo Jr. &amp; Sons Incorporated, 7 Boombridge Road, Wesley, Rhode Island. Waste Connections, MTG Mega Disposal and Patriot Disposal, 9 Industrial Way, Seco, Mass. Waste Management, 1610 Pontiac Ave, Cranston, Rhode Island. Applications and filing fees received and posted, is that correct, Lisa?
This is Lisa. Yes. The, you'll see before you that On Time Disposal, their application came in today. And their fees and the Piccolo matter, we have not yet received their application, but it could be because of the delay in the postal service that everybody's experienced for the last month or so. So we've reached out to them. I haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Okay, so do I need to amend this motion to remove Stephen Piccolo Jr. &amp; Sons, or what's?
No, I think you can move forward. If they happen to get in touch with us and say that they're no longer in business, of course, we will not issue an application or a license to them. Every year, it seems like there are one or two changes to our licensed commercial haulers where some companies absorb other companies' database or customers. So it's not unusual for that to be a change. So you could go forward and approve subject to.
To receiving the application.
Individual licenses, all or in one, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Oftentimes, they do not pay taxes here, some do. So it's a different sort of approval procedure. And you also received a memo from the Chief of Police that they had no objection as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Lisa. Is there any discussion from town council members on this?
No.
I'll, Scott Billhurst, I move that these applications be approved subject to all fees paid and all paperwork is submitted. And that's based on the Steve Piccolo situation. So I think that covers it, unless I think I missed anything. Advise, Lisa.
No, that's fine.
Excellent. Do I have a second on that motion?
Mr. President?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Scott Billhurst, aye.
Marvel, aye.
All right. A motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn as a licensing board and reconvene as a council?
Scott Billhurst, so moved.
Counselor Gary?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
David, aye.
Next up, proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Opening a hearing on a petition to order, excuse me, to consider amendments to the Hopkinington zoning ordinance, including the farm viability ordinance in Chapter 246 entitled Non-Residential Photovoltaic Solar Energy Systems as amended January 22nd, 2019, filed by Thomas and Cynthia, Dr. Thomas and Cynthia Skolco, 192 Woodville Road, Hopkinington, R.I., 02833, and 132 East 95th Street, New York, New York. The application is filed in accordance with Section 16 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hopkinington as amended. The proposal would amend Sections 2, 5, 5.3, 5.5 through 7, and 10 of the zoning ordinance in order to substantially revise the manner in which major, minor, accessory, and contaminated solar energy system proposals, including roof-mounted and commercial solar energy systems, are considered and approved throughout the town of Hopkinington. Proposed changes include, but are not limited to, limiting principal use/commercial solar energy systems to manufacturing zones requiring land development project review for principal use/commercial solar energy systems, requiring special use permit approval for such uses, altering the dimensional requirements for such uses, and establishing precedence of approval when multiple approvals are required. The application describing the proposed amendments is a 22-page document that, if adopted, would represent a comprehensive overhaul of the town's regulation of all proposed solar energy systems throughout the town. Applicant or representative is present? All fees paid and, all fees paid notices posted, Lisa?
The filing fees have been paid. I received the invoice for the advertisement, and that will be billed out separately, and any other fees, such as stenographer's fees, will be billed out as well.
Okay, I have council discussion here. I'm assuming we're going to, we're going to continue with a workshop unless, Scott, do you have something to say?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to, to continue, to resume the workshop at the conclusion of the town council meeting. It seems that we're going to be discussing this issue then, and anything that we may learn at that time would reflect on any ultimate vote that we have. So I think that's the most practical motion to make. Thank you.
Okay, so, so is, just, just so I can follow, you know, procedure properly, and I know this is an advertised town hearing?
Yes.
Would it be, what would be the proper procedure here to move forward with this? Because I know this is, is there any, any recommendation?
I think it would be, Scott Billhurst, our attorney, Mr. Seifel, should address that. But I would think that from a practical and common sense, if we're, you would have to resume the workshop because people still want to talk about it, so.
Excellent. Okay, so we'll consider a motion. I will, so do I have a?
I just made a motion, Mr. President.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hold on, Sharon?
I'm not sure. I just want to explain again what his motion is.
My motion is if on the, on the council packet at the end, it says, "Consider motion to resume workshop at conclusion of town council meeting." So basically, I'm just doing that because from a practical point of view, why would you have a? Because you're going to address all these things after the meeting in another workshop. I mean, it's just logical.
Okay, 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 so I guess I'm just looking at what was printed for me.
Okay.
And what's printed for me says, sort of says that you have to consider the motion to continue or resume the public hearing at a later date, place and time, or set a date for decision, and then consider motion to resume the workshop at conclusion of the town council meeting. So I'm just trying to figure out if we need to get the motion to, I don't know, do something about the public hearing at a later date.
You address this, please. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Should we, I guess what Counselor Hurst is asking and Counselor Davis is, would the fact that we are going to obviously continue or resume this public hearing at a later date, would making a motion to do that satisfy the requirements of this public hearing?
I, this is Steve Seifel, the solicitor. I would suggest, yes, that you make a motion and include in the motion the date and time that the meeting will be moved to, and also that we get the agreement of Mr. Squares as the representative of the applicant's, his agreement to that continuance.
You would, Scott, Scott Billhurst, should I redraw my motion and rephrase it?
I, you can. I think it makes more sense to continue this hearing of the proposed amendment and then to, if you want, in a separate motion to, you know, move to resume the workshop after this town council meeting is adjourned.
Okay, I will draw my motion. Counselor Gary, withdraw this second. I'm moved that we resume a public hearing at the conclusion of the town council meeting and.
No.
Is that?
Scott, you're going to have to, it's, I would make a motion to continue or resume the public hearing at a later date, and we need to set a date on that. So I think we would have to discuss a potential future date, and then we can make a motion to resume or continue to that date, to be specific.
Okay, I will, I make a motion that the, the town council resume the hearing date at the, the next the evening.
Let's, just, I don't mean to interrupt, but let's, I think the best way to do it is going to pull out the calendar, and we're going to kick this public hearing, for lack of a better word, down the road a little bit. And then we will schedule some more workshops. So I don't have a calendar in front of me, Lisa. You know what our.
I do.
Availability is. Do you have any recommendations?
Yes, I have a calendar in front of me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so you have a, your next regularly scheduled town council meeting is February 1st. The only other matter that is on there is a minor ordinance amendment to the waterline ordinance. So I would imagine that would be in a suitable date, as long as you have agreement by the applicant.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to anticipate that we're going to have some workshop tonight. And then, I mean, we're going to have to have another workshop the following week, probably the 25th, so I'm just going to put that out there now. And then you said our next regularly scheduled meeting would be on February 1st, so. I would like to schedule a date out that we can pretty much guarantee we would be ready through the workshop process to present a document to, to be voted on. So I'm going to make a recommendation, and if any other council members have any recommendations, I would, I would like to hear that. I'm going to propose the 15th of February. Is that Valentine's Day? Is that going to get me in trouble?
That's a holiday.
Okay.
It's a President's Day.
Oh, it's President's Day. So the 16th? Or, I mean, and again, if any other councils have any comments or concerns or suggestions, I would like to hear them, please.
I'm, this Counselor Gary, I'm good with the 16th, but don't forget, last time we got together, we talked pretty much February. We're doing town council meeting on the 1st, we're doing town. We're doing town council meeting on the 1st, we're doing town budget on the 8th, 11th. So yeah, I'm good with the 16th.
Yeah, because we're, so, so Lisa, with that being said, could, can you, you probably have the financial town or meetings or workshops in front of you?
I do.
Can you tell us what those days are in February?
So, yeah, so in February for your budget workshops, they are the 8th, the 11th, the 22nd, and the 25th. 16th of February is your regular town council meeting. The only other matter is another ordinance amendment that was submitted by a previous counselor. And that has to do with amending the district use table to allow for, let's see, to limit gas stations and diesel stations to the existing ones that we have and to allow the electronic, the electric, whatever infrastructure there is for electric cars. So it's an amendment to the district use table. So I think you could do both that evening.
On the 16th?
On the 16th?
On the 16th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bob Marvel or Sharon Davis, do you have any, any comment on that?
Steve, is this, is this for a workshop or for the, for the ordinance?
It's, it's to schedule another date for the ordinance, yes, for, to present in, in, yes, public hearing, yep.
And you would want to hear confirmation from your applicant?
Sure, yes, yeah, that's why I'm kinda, kinda, kinda floating these ideas out and in discussion here, so we're not going back and forth with him. So the, so just so I know, the 16th would be a regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, because February is just gonna be a jam in for us.
The 16th is fine. If, if, if the applicant can take it, it's okay with it.
Bob, do you, did, you're fine with it?
I'm fine with the 16th, yeah.
Attorney Squares, how does that, does that fit into your schedule or, or something that you'd be able to, to work with?
16th, the 16th I could work with, yeah. Okay, I could be here on the 16th.
Okay, excellent. So we will, we will, we will reschedule the public hearing for the 16th of February 2021? And then
That's a motion?
I, I, I'm not making the motion, if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll, I'll do it.
I make a motion that we continue the public.
Counsel, Counselwoman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I would advise that we get Mr. Squares' agreement to that before, before you vote on the motion.
I thought that was him who said he was okay with it. Was I wrong?
Well, I'll just state for the record that this is Attorney Peter Squares on behalf of the applicants. And February 16th, we agree to that date.
Okay, thank you, sir. So go ahead, Sharon, if you were making a motion?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing and to, on February 16th. At 7:00 P.M.? Yeah, 7:00 P.M., it's fine.
This is Marvel, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Yes, do I have a motion to, to resume the workshop at the conclusion of the town council?
Scott Billhurst, so moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Marvel, aye.
David, aye.
Motion passes. Next up, consent agenda. Approve town council meeting minutes of January 4th, Jan, January 4th, 2021. Town council workshop notes of December 28th, 2020. Accept the following monthly financial activity report. Town clerk, approve abatements to 2020 tax roll due to land curb adjustments and duplicate building, a vehicle correction for days owned, and a soldiers and sailors exemption correction submitted by the tax assessor. Approve refunds due to overpayments by taxpayers on 2015 and 2019 motor vehicle taxes submitted by the tax collector. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Marvel.
I'll second, Gary.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Moffett, aye?
David, aye.
Okay, all right. Next up, council president's report. Comments from the January 13th, 2021 Charahoe Regional School District Omnibus Meeting. I would just like to, I, I just want to take this moment to thank Brian Rosso for his preparation for that meeting and for his efforts in, in, you know, kind of presenting the town and leading the town forward in that, in that discussion. So that, I, I just wanted to recognize Brian for that. And that's it. So new business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to appoint Scott Ahern as tree warden for one-year term.
Scott Billhurst, I make a motion that Scott Ahern be reappointed tree warden for one-year term to January 2022.
Do I have a second?
I second, Marvel, second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
David, aye.
Gary is absent for this vote, so. So boards and commissions, I, I, I'm gonna wait till, till Counsel Gary returns. Okay, boards and commissions, discuss and consider and possibly vote to reappoint Zafar Aga to the Recreation Commission. Do I have any discussion? So with that said, do I have a motion to reappoint Zafar Aga to the Recreation Commission?
Scott Billhurst, I move that Zafar Aga be reappointed to the Recreation Commission.
Do I have a second?
Sharon Davis, second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Marvel, aye.
Motion passes. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Robert Green to the Animal Control Commission. Is there any discussion?
Scott Billhurst, I move that Robert Green be reappointed to the Animal Control Commission.
Do I have a second?
Gary, second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Marvel, aye.
David, aye.
Next up, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Jeffrey Cook to the Police Commission. Do I have any discussion?
Scott Billhurst, I move that Jeffrey Cook be reappointed to the Police Commission.
Do I have a second?
David, second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Marvel, aye.
Motion passes. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to accept Julie Dumas resignation from the juvenile hearing board. Is there any discussion?
Scott Billhurst, I move that we accept the resignation of Julie Dumas from the juvenile hearing board with regret.
Do I have a second?
Gary, second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
David, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to accept Annie Burns' resignation from the Committee on Aging.
Scott Billhurst, I move that the resignation of Annie Burns from the Committee on Aging be accepted with regret.
Do I have a second?
Gary, second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Marvel, aye.
David, aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the public forum. Okay, I, I have one hand up here. Joe, go ahead, Joe.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau from Old Ebo Road. I just want to make a comment that my use of examples of past mistakes were to improve our ordinance so that we could learn from our mistakes. But I would like a clarification, and I don't expect it now, but from our town solicitor in reference to Title 42, State Affairs and Government, Chapter 42-46, Open Meetings, Section 42-46-6, in particular, Letter D. This question comes up a lot on what we can say, what we can't say, what we can comment on. And moving forward, I would just like a clarification again on this particular State Affairs and Government title. That, thank you.
Could I just respond to Mr. Moreau?
Go ahead, Steve.
I, I didn't at all want to discourage you from, from making any comments at the meeting. I just wanted to let the council know that we, you know, they shouldn't be discussing specific developments. I don't think there was anything wrong with you bringing those issues to their attention as examples. But I
Okay. I'm sorry then.
No, I, I just, I, I didn't mean to discourage your comment at all, I'm sorry if it came off that way. But I will get to that section of the Open Meetings Act and report back to the council.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and, and it's just, you know, a comment, because I've had comments with the town council president before and the town manager with a lot, and myself included, with a lot of people involved in the town. I think it's a good training tool moving forward, especially with members, new members on boards and commissions, that we should know exactly, you know, how to proceed with these meetings. Again, I think it's a great training tool to utilize that, and I look forward to your expertise on how we can move forward with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Is there any other, anyone else like to make a comment during this public forum time? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, not, not seeing any more hands, do I have a motion to adjourn the town council meeting?
Mr. President, Scott Billhurst, I move that we adjourn in memory of the late Honorable United States Representative Edward P. Beard of the 2nd Congressional District and Norma Powers of California, a former resident of our town.
Thank you, Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Gary, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Marvel, aye.
Okay, motion passes, all right, so we are going to, we're going to reconvene our workshop. And I will just, just, just repeat all this again. Hockington Council Workshop, January 19th, 2021. Reconvene workshop to continue discussion regarding proposed amendments to the zoning district use table to amend permitted uses for solar energy systems throughout the town of Hockington to possibly change and/or amend the review and approval procedures for all solar energy systems within a town of Hockington as submitted by Peter Squares Esquire on behalf of his clients, Dr. Thomas and Cynthia Skolko, including but not limited to discussions regarding potential impacts to the photovoltaic solar energy systems ordinance and the farm-based photovoltaic solar energy systems ordinance. For further details on the proposed amendments submitted by Attorney Squares, please visit the town's website. So we will pick up our conversation here during the workshop. And as I said before, I will entertain public comment to, to start this. Go ahead, Mr. Bittler.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify two points really quickly in my comments. First of all, my comments did not have anything to do with the question of whether or not the town council should have input from the staff and other boards and committees in town. The issue is that the recommendations from the planning staff and the building staff should be clear as they relate to the proposed changes. They should be clear about what are the proposed changes and why are they being offered. So, for example, you know, I actually am in total agreement that we don't need a special use permit for accessory use of solar on houses and that kind of thing. But I hear that in this meeting, but what I read in the document is that none of the uses, including the principal use of solar in the planning staff's recommend, recommended draft, all, the entire use of the special use permit process has been eliminated. So that's why I say it's very important to be clear, it's very important to have a marked draft, and I think that these recommendations should be summarized. And the other thing I think is even more important, you know, a town council workshop is a very public process. All public meetings are a public process, but in particular, a workshop whose purpose is to get feedback from all sorts of stakeholders on changes, proposed changes to an ordinance as momentous as this one. And the members of the public and other boards and committees don't attend these meetings to observe the town council's deliberations. They want to understand what's going on in front of them, and they want to be able to participate. So I disagree that the, you know, that advice from the planning board to the town council that becomes the basis of those deliberations should be a private document. Now, it might be that the staff might want to provide that document directly to the town council, but I think that the town council and the clerk and everyone involved should understand that these are the types of documents that should be immediately made offer, offered for the public, you know, made available to them, so that members of the public can understand what it is that you're deliberating and can have a chance to digest that and have a chance to comment. Otherwise, it defeats the entire purpose of the workshop. So I think that is critically important that, you know, all of these documents that are being used for the basis of your deliberations, they need to be made public in advance, otherwise your deliberations are completely unintelligible. And the rest of us that you want to encourage to participate in your, in our town government can't really participate in a meaningful way. So I hope you'll understand the nature of my, my objection there. That's, that's what we really want. We want transparency and we want engagement from the public. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Hurst, do you have a comment?
Scott Billhurst, I, I believe in engagement from the public, but the question also is, is can town officials respond to questions from elected and appointed officials of the town without having everything distributed when nobody is actually decided on where they're going? And I would like to respectfully ask Attorney Seipol what his legal opinion is on, on this matter, because it could impede, to a sense, and I don't know to what extent, a free discussion between town, town officials, whether elected, appointed, and legal counsel or any other staff before they ever formulate any opinions on anything. And some, some of us will stop in and see the town planner or maybe call him or ask him information. So a lot of times, these things are fact-finding before we actually know where we're going or whether or not we've drawn any opinions. Thank you. But I do ask the solicitors some advice on that, in that area. I think it'd be beneficial for all the council members and as well as the boards and the staff people in the town themselves.
I'm sorry, Councilman, could you, I'll jot down some notes here, but if you could explain exactly what it is you'd like me to look into, and I can, I can do that.
Okay, Scott Billhurst, again, I just want to know what the legal issues are as far as sharing information before we just, to what extent we have to make it public when we're just collecting information either elected or appointed officials with town staff? Because a lot of times, if it's fact-finding and we haven't even decided on where we're going, we have, don't even have a document or position, and it's just general information. I, I just, I just think that we need a clarification, because a lot of times, public officials suspected up to something nefarious or whatever, and a lot of times, you have to And a lot of times you have to, uh, be able to communicate freely with staff and, and board members before you even have a decision. And, uh, I just think that, uh, it would save a lot of grief for all concerned.
Sure. I mean, I think the answers to, to that would probably be in the, uh, Open Meetings Act and the Access to Public Records Act, and I can put together something for you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Gary, did you have a question?
Ace, hey, yes, Solicitor, uh, Councilor Gary. I think what we're trying to get to is when this, when this came out, uh, I think what, basically what Counselor Hurst is saying is that it should stay between town council and staff before it goes public. Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I could say that generally, um, under the Access to Public Records Act, uh, documents that are like, uh, work papers and drafts, uh, that are exchanged amongst, uh, staff people and council people would be, uh, not subject to the, uh, Access to Public Records Act. But anytime a document, uh, is introduced at a public meeting, it does become subject and it does become a public document. So, uh, once Mr. Lamphier's, uh, comments, version, his memo, what have you, whatever, however you'd like to describe it, um, once that was uh, put in front of the council and just discussed at the public meeting, at that point, that document became a public document. But I wouldn't say that all of his, um, you know, drafts and, and, you know, ideas, notes, things like that, um, that led to the creation of that would, I, I would say that those would probably not be public. But that, um, that would be found in the Access to Public Records Act.
All right, thank, thanks, Solicitor. Uh, I, uh, Scott Billhurst, again, because I think the, the problem is that in a small town, it's always gossip, there's speculation, and the, and it's even in bigger places than a small town. But, uh, uh, and then it ends up in the press and people think they have an inside scoop or, or make some assumptions, and assumptions might not even be relevant because the, the, the players, the council, elected officials, staff, appointed, uh, officials, uh, might not even discuss it. But it's, I can understand your, uh, situation once it's presented to the council publicly. But it just seems that, uh, there's a lot of angst created that's unnecessary. Uh, and there's angst anyways, but it just makes it more, more so. And I just think that we should, since this is a new council term, that we should get on board of how we should handle this. So we at least respect the, the rights of the public to know, but not to create a lot of, uh, speculation because of things that are shared that nobody knows where they're going. And it's just to, it's for the benefit of all to, uh, at least campen down some of the angst that goes on in town. Thank you.
Council President, can I interject?
You sure can, Bob. Go ahead, uh, Councilor Marvel.
So I, I, I think that you were getting a little bit off track on our discussion and, and I don't want to see us get bogged down in a back and forth on this and, and not be able to go forward. I think that, you know, whatever issues we've had or whatever, whatever mistakes we've made in the past, I think from this point on, it's, it's, uh, the, the proper procedure that we should be following is that we should be reviewing the original Skolko proposal as it is, as it was originally proposed and make amendments, make notes, make comments to it, and then just use that document as the, the official and public document going forward because that is, is proper procedure and it is the most transparent. So, um, I think that we should probably try and get past the, you know, what we did in the past and try and move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Marvel. Okay, um, I saw a hand before. Are, are, are there any hands before I close this, uh, this, uh, set, uh, at least the opportunity to ask in any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Um, I am going to move forward. Um, so with, with that being said, um, I, I think the council is in agreement that we, uh, that we should move forward reviewing, uh, the original, uh, Skolko amendment and that we should, uh, we should start from the beginning. And, um, obviously we all have our own notes and concerns and comments and all that. Um, you know, we went over some stuff. We've discussed some stuff, so we kind of know how we feel. But, um, if, um, if, uh, Council Marvel would like to make any notations or, you know, to any, uh, you know, amendments to the, uh, Skolko proposal, um, that'd be great. And you're in agreement with that, uh, Council Marvel?
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start by saying, uh, I'm happy to make notes and provide the, you know, the official notated copy if that's appropriate. And then after this workshop, I'll, I'll, you know, finalize my notes and then I will provide it to the rest of the council and then both Attorney Seipol and Attorney Scores, if that's, if that's, uh, acceptable and appropriate.
And, and then at such time, it, it would be made public document, obviously, because we're, we're discussing it. So it should be posted to the town website?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, um, so, um, so, uh, to, uh, to kind of not say speed it along, but to kind of move this along, um, I'm going to suggest that we, um, like we did last time, was to start at the, uh, the zoning, um, uh, district use table and, um, and move on from there. So that is page four of nineteen.
On which, on the scope?
Um, yes, on the original Skolko document. It's, it's right in that packet that I used there. This year, it's, um, it's got the blueprint on the, on the front of it.
Council President, I'd like to, uh, make a comment on that once we're all ready to go. Um, so in the Skolko proposal, and, and again, I think that after reviewing the land use table, probably the next step is to dig a little bit deeper into the definitions. But I think, uh, we kind of understand the intent of these, um, these items. And I would, uh, propose that, because I think our intent as a town is to try and minimize as much as possible the major, uh, major development projects that we've seen come through the town. And on, uh, item or table, item number three oh six and three oh seven, um, where the Skolkos and Attorney Scores has limited those to, um, special use permit on manufacturing and, uh, non-permitted everywhere else, I would suggest that we take the extra step and make it, uh, non-permitted everywhere for major and minor energy systems. That, the, the reasoning behind that, the reasoning behind that is, is pretty much, it, it closes the door to any attempts to, to do spot zoning changes.
I'm in agreement with that, Bob.
Sorry, Sharon, I think, yeah, and Sharon, I think, I think I, I talked over you, so I apologize for that.
Okay, I was gonna say I agree. That's what I was gonna say. I was gonna change it also to eliminate manufacturing, to put ends all the way across for three oh six and three oh seven. Um, and on three oh eight, I would, I would change the S's to P's for, um, all the way through manufacturing. I haven't figured out about the aquifer yet, but I don't know, but I, I don't think, I, I guess I was gonna make them P's. For RFR eighty, RES one, neighborhood business, commercial and manufacturing. But I haven't thought about the aquifer overlay stuff yet.
Go ahead, Council Marvel. I think, I, I think Bob, or excuse me, um-
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I, I concur with, uh, Council Davis, um, on all of that. I think that, um, assuming that we're going to go through and, and really very, uh, tightly define what accessory solar energy systems means, I think that the intent is residential roof mounted for the most part. And I think that it makes sense to allow that in, in all zones, uh, without having to go through, uh, special use permit. And, and, you know, I'm open to discussion on that.
Uh, Council Moffett here. I am in, uh, agreement with that.
And then for number three oh nine, I would have, um, contaminated site solar energy systems. I would make it a, a F in manufacturing. And, um, I can't, I, I'm not sure whether we should change the two N's in the aquifer to As. I'm not sure.
I, I'll, I'll weigh in if you don't mind, Council Davis.
Sure.
I'll say that the, uh, from my thinking, I think the primary aquifer should be an A because it is the primary aquifer. And if we're doing anything, uh, even if it's manufacturing over the aquifer, I think we should, uh, require additional review of that. So I think, uh, for a primary aquifer, it should be an A.
Uh, we could put a, make it a primary, uh, make it a A in secondary too. So I, I have no problem with that.
So just for discussion on, on, on that, um, so a, as it stands in three oh nine, in the aquifer primary, an N would just not allow it? Is that what, where I'm, am I correct in understanding it that way?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Councilman, yeah. Yeah, this is Steve Seipol, the Solicitor. Um, I'm, I believe I'm looking at the same, um, Skolko version that, that you are. Um, and my understanding is, is your ordinance works, uh, by having N's for no, as in not permitted. Uh, S's for a use that requires a special use permit and a P for permitted, and those would be the three, uh, options for each box on this grid.
I think that, uh, this is, uh, Council Marvel, I think that this is where, um, our town planner should weigh in because I think the aquifer overlay is a little bit different in that there are, I think that the letters are P, N or A. So I'm gonna defer to Jim Lamphier and ask him to, uh, to define that for us.
Yes, uh, Jim Lamphier, town planner, uh, Councilor Marvel, you are absolutely correct. Those are the three options.
And, uh, Jim, can you give us a brief explanation again of, of what the A means?
A means an aquifer protection permit is required.
Okay.
So you'd, you would have to go to the zoning board. You know, you could almost think, I, I'm hesitant to say to equivocate, uh, an aquifer protection permit with a special use permit, but it's very similar to that. So you could think of those, those last two columns as a special use permit. So you wouldn't put an S, S in those columns. So you either, you either put no. Now, if an N is there, that means that the use is not permitted re- regardless of how, of what letters are preceded in that, in that row. Uh, if you're, for example, if you're in the primary and you have a, a no, even if you're allowed by right to do it, let's say manufacturing, the, that would override it. It's no. So, um, you know, N is not permitted, P is permitted, um, without an aquifer protection permit. Uh, and an A is, is an aquifer protection permit required. So it's-
So based on that, that means that the last two columns in the line three oh eight should also be As, right?
Correct. S, S's do not apply, so that was, that was not done properly.
Okay.
Uh, this is the, um, Solicitor, uh, could I get a clarification from the planner? You're obviously much more familiar than this ordinance that I've only been working with for a few weeks now. But, um, you have, you have As that would be only in the last two columns for the aquifer, uh, overlays.
Correct.
Is that correct?
But only in the last two lines too.
Right.
Only, only in three oh eight and three oh nine.
Correct. Look, so, so my, I, I guess, you know, this is just for discussion is that, I mean, if we are not allowing it even at all in, and correct me if I'm wrong, or if I'm looking at this, you know, differently than you are. Um, but if we're not allowing it in RFRE, you know, residential one, neighborhood business, um, but we're gonna give it an opportunity to be done in the aquifer primary and secondary?
Yes, well, if you-
Which line?
Uh, three oh eight and three oh nine. I mean, I'm primary looking, I'm sorry, I'm primary looking at three oh nine. So, uh, Jim, you, you wanted to speak? Uh, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to mention that the, the ordinance, again, one of the, one of the flaws in this ordinance is that, as, as written, is, um, even if you look at three oh six, if you look at column, uh, row three oh six, all the way to the right, you have two N's. So even though you have an S under manufacturing, that, that three, three oh six is not allowed anywhere across the board. You go down to three oh seven, not allowed across the board. Um, three oh nine, not allowed. So I mean, uh, that, that's, that's exact- This is why you need staff to take a look at it. Now, again, and I'm almost at the, and I know we're talking, but we're still talking about minor and major solar energy systems. But I, again, I, I'll ask Attorney Scores if he wants to stick with that throughout. But how can you do an industrial, if we're gonna equate solar energy systems with industrial uses? If you look at state law, state law says that all non-residential developments shall be done as major land development projects. So I mean, I don't know why we're still going with minor unless you want it done as a, maybe development plan review. Uh, I guess you can do that, but, but again, in the ordinance that, uh, in the changes that were suggested by staff, we, we actually was more restrictive in making everything done as a major land development project. So we didn't, we didn't get more lenient, uh, in all respects. We got a little bit more restrictive. But that, that wasn't the point of our, yes, go ahead, Sharon.
But now we're not allowing anything in three oh six and three oh seven, period. So that, you don't have to talk about it. Nothing.
True, true, but you, you'll have to- tru- true, but you'll have to define somewhere, uh, or make a provision for, um, a commercial. Oh, unless you don't, unless you don't want them. You can scratch the whole thing, sure.
We don't want them.
Okay, yep, fine.
So now all that we're talking about is accessories and contaminated.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, this is, this is Council Marvel. So just, just to clarify, so accessory solar, so with the, the discussion for that item is to permit it in all zones, um, by right? And so the aquifer zones or the aquifer overlays would also be a P because we'd be permitting them there also? Or, or Jim?
We're making them As.
For the accessory?
I don't know if you want As there or not, because again, you would, that, if you put As there, that would require a residential electric customer to go to the zoning board for an aquifer protection permit. I don't think, I don't think something like that is, is required for a rooftop, uh, solar energy system. And even ground model, if you wanted to put it in your backyard, I don't think it'd be, I don't think it's appropriate for that either, so. So I don't, I don't think-
Sorry, go ahead.
Nope, no, go, I'm sorry, no.
So, so if it's, if it's P, if it's permitted with a P all the way across in the, the actual land zones, then we would assume that it would still be P in both of the aquifer zones?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I, I had the, the letter notation correct.
Yep.
Okay.
So would it be consistent, Jim, to have, uh, in, in line three oh nine, to have N's in RFR eighty, residential one, neighborhood business, commercial, and have N's in the aquifer, uh, primary and secondary? Should they kind of match up or, or, I mean, I, I'm probably missing a goal on, uh, uh,
No.
on this thought process.
No, if, if we're looking at row three oh nine and you want, the first four would be N's right through commercial. We don't want them in commercial either. So, um, do you, you, do you want to permit them in manufacturing? I got a P there right now.
Uh, we're gonna change that to S, I think. Is, is that what we discussed?
Okay.
That's what's under-
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so that would be a special use permit and, um, uh, N, N would not be appropriate in the primary- All right. So that would be a special use permit and, um, uh, N, N would not be appropriate in the primary or secondary. That would be not appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, so. Either A or P, whatever your preference is.
It's gonna be A. I think, I think that's what we decided, yep. Or that's what we discussed, I should say.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so, um, so that, now that that is complete, the zoning district table, we should, um, uh, if we're all in agreement, uh, I, I think Bob, you suggested that we go to the definitions following?
I got something to say.
Sure, go ahead, Scott.
I, uh, think the council should strongly consider having S for RFRA eighty. Specifically, uh, some of the issues I see with property in this town is we have non-conforming uses, we have dumps and quarries, we have contaminated sites of various contamination, not all contamination is the same. And the big question is, most of this town is an on RFRA eighty zone. So what you're saying is no to addressing some of the problems. Whether they're, uh, former landfills or areas, we don't know where the contamination is, things we've done many years ago before, uh, zoning existed. And I would at least hope the council would seriously consider a special use permit for the RFRA eighty zone specifically because it can address some of those issues that they will prop up. If you put an N in there, you won't have a, a remedy to address that. So I think, and I asked the council not to say yes or no, but at least be open-minded to an S in the RFRA eighty zone specifically because Osvald Land is in that area. There's a lot of things done in the past. Or areas that might be contaminated of various degree. And that could be a solution to the problem. And we also have an issue of non-conforming use in some parts of the town also. Just think about it and uh, if you still think, uh, you disagree, that's fine, but I just think I have responsibility to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Council Marvel, can I, can I, uh, add on to that?
Yes, you can. And then I'm gonna go to Lisa. Uh, Lisa has her hand up, so go ahead.
Okay. So, so, uh, Scott, I'm assuming you're talking about the line three oh nine, the contaminated site solar systems?
Yes, three oh nine, because everybody else was talking. I had to get my word in.
Sure, sure. So I, I guess my only concern, and, and we can certainly discuss this further, is i- if we, uh, if we set, if we use the land use table to allow for exceptions like that, or allow for special situations, we're allowing it for everything, everything under RFRA eighty. So, uh, my concern is what, you know, how, how else is that going to be utilized? And what's the impact if we make it an S? What's the impact on the planning board and the, and the town planner to have to review, uh, you know, additional applications that come, come up?
Well, I, I, well, I think, uh, Scott Billhurst, I think that, uh, my points speaks for itself. You're saying contaminated. So begs the question, what is this council, what is their position? Non-conforming use, which I mentioned, what is their, uh, comeback for thing, use of, of past days, which could be contaminated or could be a former landfill or, or whatever, uh, a former, uh, a garage or someplace that had grease or oil or petroleum, uh, that's in an RFRA eighty zone today, that pre-existed zoning, which is like an early seventies, I think it was nineteen seventy, so I could be wrong on the, the exact year when they put zoning in this town, but I think it was nineteen seventy. Uh, it's just that type of thing. And I'm just asking people to have an open mind. It's, uh, a question is, what are we gonna do with contaminated sites in the future? We just gonna leave them there? Are we gonna still charge people taxes on them? How are we gonna address the, the issues with that in a special use permit? It's not an automatic, people have to give a reason why they need that, uh, special use permit. And it's for contaminated. It's not all RF eighty. It's sites which have been identified as contaminated. Just think about it. Thank you.
So this is Council Marvel again. I, I just have a question and, and I, I guess I, I don't need an answer. I just wanna throw this question out. What do we do currently with properties that are either contaminated or, uh, non-conforming use? I, I don't, I don't know what we currently, how we currently handle those. But it's, it's, I think worthwhile to, to think about that.
Hey, it's Council Gary. Maybe we can have, uh, the town planner step in on that and answer all our, answer the question for us all.
Can, uh, Jim, 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 just go, can you wait one second? Lisa's had her hand up here for a little while. I just wanna offer her the opportunity. Uh, Lisa, do you have a comment?
Let's see if I can remember what it was. Um, yes, um, I had a question in regards to, as you're dealing with contaminated sites. We have a potential for, uh, solar farm at the town's landfill, which is a contin- contaminated site. I believe it's zoned RFRA eighty and would enacting this, um, these changes to the zoning, uh, district use table, would that prevent that project from occurring?
Lisa? This is Sharon. I, I would think. I would think that we would.
Sharon, I think Jim should answer this question.
Um, I, I, I wanna answer, I just wanna comment that, um, we are talking about the solar ordinance. I, I understand there's concern about the Stub Town Road. But, um, at, at, at this point, for the sake of the ordinance, um, I, I would have probably avoid discussing any particular uh, projects at, at, at this point.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I just, um. Steve, do you have any comment on that?
Yes, uh, Steve Seipold, Town Solicitor. I would agree with that, that, um, any discussion of any particular project or a particular piece of land or a particular developer would, uh, not be appropriate during the workshop.
Okay.
Um, we should only be discussing the ordinance that applies, um, to the whole town.
Thank you. So Jim, did you want to answer Bob's question as far as how we handle the non-conforming use?
Yes, uh, very simply, uh, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, uh, our current ordinance provides for solar arrays to be in commercial zones or manufacturing zones. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't consider whether the site is contaminated or not contaminated at the point, at this point in time. Although we have had some projects that had some, let's say, possible contamination and they've been put forth to the, uh, to the town council for consideration. Um, the consideration was, was given to rezone the property to, uh, to, uh, from, you know, what it was to, to either commercial or manufacturing. And so that, that's, that's how we decide things right now. Purely based on the zoning of the, of the parcel and not, not so much, uh, what, what type of contamination may or may not exist.
Thank you, Bob. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, I see some hands up. Um, I wasn't, I was gonna move forward with this, but seeing as we're, uh, talking about the district use table and we were going to move on to, uh, definitions, I'm gonna allow some questions on what we were just discussing. Carol DeRozers, do you, you have your hand up, please?
Yes, Carol DeRozers. I wanted to comment, um, in terms of three oh six and three oh seven, if we are going to move forward with N's across all of those, I think what the town planner and zoning did to just reduce it to one line called principal solar energy system land development makes a lot of sense and simplifies the ordinance overall. Um, I guess I would also like to comment that, um, even though we said we're not gonna talk about direct sites like Stub Town, the original PSES did have, um, an exception for town-owned property. So I think, you know, there's gonna be ways to deal with and incorporate, you know, town-owned, uh, contaminated sites going forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Um, Chip, I'll get to you in one second. I'm gonna go with Lisa just 'cause, uh, this may pertain to the, uh, to the meeting. Lisa, go ahead.
I'm off that. I.
Okay, I, I, I just saw your hand up. That was all.
Nope. You can put my hand down. Thank you.
Okay, I will. Uh, Chip Hale?
Yeah, hi, Chip Hale, two eleven JSL Road. Um, I, uh, it's, it's, it's a little troubling to me that, uh, we're talking about contaminated sites. And I mentioned this a little bit before, uh, I, it seems like we're, we're, um, you're, you're setting yourself up for, um, bad behavior down the road. Uh, I, it seems like to me, from a resident and the town's perspective, is we should be actually trying to remedy contaminated sites, uh, versus, uh, covering them up or potentially, um, developing them. Um, I realize they're tricky situations, but we shouldn't just be letting people off the hook because they've got, uh, an, uh, they've either acquired or inherited a contaminated site. You need to address that. And we should be concerned about that because of, um, our aquifer and our groundwater. I mean, this is, I, 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 I'm starting to feel like a little bit of a broken record here, but we need to start considering, um, our town and, uh, the environment as a whole and the impacts that some of these decisions that we make, um, have on that. Uh, in particular, I think it's a little, uh, interesting to say that we're, where there's a primary or secondary aquifer that there is, we're not just gonna say an all-out no to that because, um, I mean, we, every single one of us is relying on these aquifers to fill our wells and provide us with drinking water. So it's not, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with the idea that we would say that we, that we put a maybe in an aquifer primary or overlay secondary zone. I mean, like, we, we've said no across the board to a lot of other things, but when we get to the aquifer column, we're willing to say maybe. Um, that just makes me feel a little bit, a little bit uneasy. So, um, I, all I'm asking is let's, let's try to think of this a little bit more holistically in the sense that we're actually talking about our town and the land, we're, almost regardless of how it's zoned as a resource that, um, in these rural communities, we rely incredibly, uh, heavily on these resources to sustain our, our rural communities. We, you know, so, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of, of throwing the baby out with the bathwater here, right? We need to consider potential areas of development, but let's not, uh, you know, the, the ones that are like super critical to our existence in this town, like our aquifers and our, and our water, uh, to me should be off the table for consideration. And let's, let's think of other areas. That's all.
Thank you, Chip. Uh, that, you know, Chip's comments kind of went to, uh, kind of, kind of coincide with, you know, why I had kind of brought back up the, uh, aquifer overlay primary and secondary and why I had questioned, you know, why we, why, or, you know, we have A's and, and not N's. So, you know, uh, you know, you know, now that I'm, you know, thinking about it more, I, I would prefer that we kind of, you know, look at that. I mean, that's why I, I had asked, like, you know, we have N's all the way across here and, you know, why don't we just continue the N's? So, um, I, I would, um, I would like to entertain that discussion. And I, I mean, I, I would like to suggest that we put N's all the way across as far as that goes. I, I think, I think it's just being consistent, you know, if, if we're not gonna, you know, put N's, I mean, if we're not gonna put an N in the aqua overlay primary and secondary, but we're gonna put N's in, you know, commercial and, and, in, you know, in all the other things. I mean, I, I just think for the sake of being consistent, we, we need to have N's in there. So is there any discussion on that?
I agree.
As we backtrack?
I back off. I agree.
Bob, do you have any discussion?
I, I would agree with that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I, I think, I agree. I think we talked about this last time.
Yeah, I think so too.
Pass out stuff, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I, I, I'm gonna propose, Bob, that we, um, and I, it, it sounds like there's a consensus here that we, uh, strike the A's from there and put the N's back in there.
So then for the, uh, item three oh nine, contaminated site solar energy system, the only change we're making is in the manufacturing zone where it's currently a P, we're going to change it to an S.
That's correct, sir.
And, and, uh, the, uh, aquifer overlays are already N.
But Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, if I can just interject, um, if, if you change those, uh, two, two N's, kind of negates the S. It makes the S irrelevant. That would, those N's would trump the S. Cause they're not permitted in either zone, period. So I don't know what the zoning board would do with it when they got a special use permit request.
Could I ask a question of the town planner, please?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Pardon my, uh, ignorance, but do these aquifer, uh, overlays, uh, does some sort of aquifer overlay cover the entire town?
Yes, the, the entire town is, is either primary or secondary.
Okay, so no.
What in?
Right, so no's in the aquifer, uh, overlay boxes would mean that nothing is allowed because those aquifer overlays cover everything?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I've seen it.
So, so this is, uh, Council Marvel. So what would the impact be? Or what, what would the, the outcome be if we left in, in, left it N in the primary aquifer overlay, but put an A in the secondary? Cause I, I, I'm assuming the primary overlay, uh, is, or the primary aquifer is far more important than the second, secondary.
Yes. Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, yes, uh, uh, Council Marvel, if you put an N in the primary, that would mean that use code number three oh nine is not allowed in the primary zone. However, if you put an A in the secondary in conjunction with the S, that means that someone, if, you know, if they have a manufacturing zone property, they would go to the zoning board for a special use permit and an aquifer protection permit.
And that's, and that's assuming that their property is, uh, manufacturing and over a secondary aquifer, not.
Correct, absolutely.
It's under, if it's over a primary, then it's automatically disallowed?
Yes.
Any, any other, uh, ideas or discussion on the, the idea of, uh, N for primary and A for secondary?
Well, I, I am, and again, part of my ignorance is to know, you know, what, Jim, maybe you can answer this. What is, what is, what are there certain requirements for the special use permit, uh, in, in the, um, in the overlay, or, or I, I should say the secondary, um, is there? I mean, it's, I mean, obviously it's a, I mean, it's not outright permitted. I mean, obviously it's an extra layer of, um, uh, scrutiny, or, you know, to say that for a lack of better word, but, um, what kind of process does the A put you through?
Again, you would go to the zoning board for that aquifer protection permit. And the zoning board would look at the proposal, uh, make sure that it employs best management practices and that it poses no, uh, harm to the, uh, aquifer. And, but that would, that's all a finding that the zoning board would make. As well as a special use permit. Uh, they have, they have above five criteria that they have to, uh, meet in order to get a special use permit to do it. Uh, so.
Okay. So the zoning board, I mean, I, I mean, uh, you know, not to, you know, I don't know anybody's qualifications as far as a, you know, um, a, a hydrologist or, or, or anything like that, but, um, is, is there a certain standard that the zoning board follows in, in, in regards to their recommendation? Do they have guidelines? I mean, cause I, I mean, obviously they're not experts in, in groundwater. Are they just, um, fulfilling their requirement? Or, um, is there a, a special body that comes up with this, um, with their guidelines as far as what their?
Yes, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, when an applicant goes to the zoning board, uh, they will, they generally have their experts uh, in tow and they make, uh, testimony and they answer questions from the zoning board members. And they answer questions from the zoning board members. And so it's up to them to present their case to the board. And it, before the board grants a special use permit, they have to make findings, certain findings of fact based upon the testimony that's presented to them. And this is all outlined, there is a standard procedure, it's all in the Zoning Enabling Act where special use permits, the findings are all specified right there in the Zoning Enabling Act. As well as for variances, the same, same standards apply. So as long, as long as the zoning board members are satisfied that it, you know, poses no harm to the community, they will, they generally have to grant the special use permit.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
Council President, can I ask?
You can, go ahead.
Based on this discussion of having an in the primary and A in the, in the secondary, I'd like some feedback and additional comments from Chip Hale if, if I could on, on that discussion.
Chip, are you available? Okay, go ahead, Chip. You have the floor.
Sorry, Bob, do you mind just repeating that real quick? I was reading something.
So, no, no worries. So i- in the latest discussion, we're talking about for the aquifer overlays, keeping an N for not allowed in the primary, but changing the secondary to an A to require that zoning review. Wondering your, your feedback on that.
Well, one of the, so here's what I worry about when we start to talk about aquifers, right? Is that these are connected, right? You have to think of an aquifer as being just this confined layer at some depth below the surface, some geologic type layer that confines our, our water flow. Water can move and moves to it, right? Typically, the aquifers are confined on the top and bottom by some different type of layer of material that, that generally doesn't allow any major water coming in and out of it, but there can be seepage, right? Seepage above and below. So right off the bat, if you tell them, I'm looking at what I was reading while you guys were talking was this, the, the map. Look, I was looking at the map for the primary protected aquifer zones. To me, if it's a pri- and I need to look up these definitions, I haven't done it yet, I apologize for that. But if it's a primary protected zone, I think we shouldn't consider anything in that. And it looks like that's where we're going with that. For the secondary one, I'd want to really know, like, what's the definition of that and how deep does that go? What's its relationship to that primary protection zone? And these are probably definitions that are somewhere out there already. We should, we can, we can look this stuff, the stuff up, I assume. But the, the idea is that if we introduce anything into any of these aquifers, it doesn't matter if I introduce something into the northern part of Hopkinton. If, if that aquifer spans all the way to the south, once we introduce something into that aquifer, it spreads. All right. And you can't stop it. The only thing that can help it is just for all of that water to be flushed out over time. And so that's what we want to bear in mind when we start thinking about placing any sort of development. This isn't just solar. But if we start to talk about things that infiltrate these aquifers, we want to be very, very careful about what we introduce into that. So again, I'm not necessarily saying, because if you look at the map, you're right, nothing could ever be, be done in Hopkinton because we were entirely covered by primary and secondary protected aquifer regions. And I realize that that's not realistic. But because our aquifers are so important to us in this part of the state, we do not have mostly in general, we do not have municipal water resources. We are all relying on these aquifers to fill our wells. This is, I've not lived in Hopkinton super long, but in the past six years, this was the first summer that we had to be very careful about our water usage with our wells. I've noticed in general, I always grew up on a well and I've always had to be very cognizant of well usage. And in my time in Hopkinton, besides this year, I never had to worry about it. If I happened to drain it, it filled up almost immediately. This summer, that wasn't the case. All right. So we really want to start to think about, you know, really, really place some high value on these aquifers because they're really so important to us here. So my point is, I really like the idea, keep, say a no to the primary ones. And if you're going to consider anything in the secondary zones, like we have to put some really, really strict criteria on that, you know, really require some, some serious hydrologic and hydrogeology testing in that area where you're very definitively characterizing the aquifers in that region, maybe even more than what we normally do now. I'm not sure what the planning board or the zoning board requires at this point, but you know, and personally, I want to say no to everything, but I realize, I realize that that's not necessarily how I can move forward here. So that's how I would approach this.
Thank you, Chip. Bob, did I kind of give you a little bit of insight there and some other?
Yeah, yeah, no, thanks, Chip. I appreciate the background and I think it, it sounds like for, for purposes of this document moving forward, at least at this time, it'll be an N for primary and an A for secondary. And it sounds like, you know, maybe as, as a separate discussion, we should talk about, you know, how, how we protect all of our aquifers, primary and secondary in town.
Sharon, were you saying something?
Can I ask? I'm sorry. Steve?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, for, if, with those, with the past discussion, I'm now questioning on 308, whether it should be N for, for primary and A for secondary as well. And, and that, and I will tell you, the reason I'm saying that is because I'm still um, thinking that people won't always use a roof, okay? So if they use something else that's closer to the ground, then, then it would be the same kind of situation as 309. So I'm not, I, I think it should be N for a primary and, and A for a secondary. For accessory solar energy systems.
What's that? I, I am going to, in, in that case, I'm going to kind of, I'm going to respectfully disagree because, you know, and, and this is obviously for discussion, but um, you know, when it, I think in these contaminated or, you know, however we're discussing this. I mean, A, the site is, in 309, the site is already contaminated. So there's, you know, there's some differences. And as far as the accessory, you know, I mean, being an N in that, and considering that the whole town is, you know, obviously covered in these overlay areas that, and being on houses, it's not going to be as concentrated. So I think the potential for, for what we're looking at in the contaminated sites where we may have a, you know, potential for a, a larger, more concentrated system is where I'm kind of thinking, whereas, you know, the accessory use is more kind of sparse and, and spread out. So I, I mean, I, I just think i- in my own opinion, obviously, that kind of just limits us to, to, to a, a different potential. You know, as, as far as a contaminated site goes in our justification for, for why we put an N in primary and an A in the secondary overlay. All right, hold on one second. Chip, go ahead again.
Um, I, I just wanted to add one thing that we should really like be aware of. The, the map that I'm looking at at this stage doesn't actually have any depth to aquifer on this. But you, you could consider, I mean, that's, that's a thing to consider, right? So if you can put any sort of the amount for a solar installation or something like that, if it doesn't come, if, if the primary aquifer is at 10, 20 feet depth or something like that, then, then maybe it's not such an issue. You know, you're not going to necessarily penetrate that aquifer. So I, I just, I'm kind of back walking a little bit. I like the idea of protecting all of our aquifers, but if our aquifers are so far below the depth of potential reach of these developments, then, then maybe it's not such an issue. But I would say we can still get seepage, we can still get groundwater seepage from above into these aquifers. So, so with regard to, for instance, the 308 thing that, that Steve, I think you, I, I, you know, Sharon noted she would prefer to put a, an N in the primary aquifer underlying 308. And Steve, you said, no, not necessarily. It depends on what an accessory solar energy system might be, right? I mean, if they're only putting these solar stands in a few feet, then maybe it's not an issue. But along with all of these, I, I think the way we should be approaching this is we should put this on the developer to provide a very detailed characterization of depth to aquifer. I mean, these are all things that we have to look at, you know, when we put a septic system in on our property, we had to put in test holes here, right? You know, why would we ask our residents to do something like that, but not ask potential developers to do that? So anyways, we can, we can throw some of this back on the developers by saying, okay, we're willing to maybe consider that sort of an activity in this particular zone. But you need to guarantee to us that you will maintain X amount of boundary between any potential aquifer. And we make that boundary, you know, if, if the literature says the boundary needs to be 10 feet, we make it 30 feet. Because we don't want anyone putting anything into our aquifers, you know? So then it's not the town saying, we're not welcome to development. We just throw this back on the developer saying, we're welcome to development or these sorts of activities if you can meet these very strict standards that, that we're laying out here. And we've made these standards because these are our natural resources here that all of us rely on to exist in our, in our town. So, so I, you know, think about it in, in, in that regard. Again, I still like the idea, a no across the board in primary aquifer. But realizing maybe we don't want to be so strict, you know, there are some, some criteria we can put in place to, to just be restrictive, let's say. That's all.
Thank you, Chip. And, 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 and that kind of goes along with what Mr. Lamphier said in, in regards to the aquifer protection permit and plan and stuff like that. You know, to, you know, they, they have to present their findings and all kinds of stuff. So I, I, I think that would give it the extra layer of scrutiny as far as A and secondary overlay. And I mean, things change. I mean, a- again, ordinances are always amended. I, I, I would encourage us to potentially, you know, find out, are there any, you know, any programs, any, you know, workshop availability to learn more about these, these overlay districts? I would encourage us as a, as a town, if we already don't have any more detailed information, you know, than that, that we potentially get all that information. All right, thank you. So Bob, or, you know, discussion on the council, are we thinking an A in, in a secondary overlay? Obviously, that's going to give, you know, the zoning board the authority to, you know, put some scrutiny on that and, and, and have the applicants obviously present some documentation from experts.
Are we still in, this president was still in, we're in 309 or 308?
309.
So this is Bob Marvel. I think for 309 contaminated site, solar energy, I think that it should be an N in the primary overlay and an A in the secondary.
I agree with that, Bob. I, I, I think it's a good place to start and then, um, you know, we, we get more information later on, you know, then, then we can, then, then, then we can revisit it at a later date. I mean, we are the town council, we can, we can make those decisions. And I think that's, that's how we should proceed with that. And I just want to back up to Sharon's point. I, I don't want to, I know I made a comment in, in regards to her observation. Sharon did that. I mean, obviously I don't want to say, did my answer satisfy, you know, your question or your, you know, you know, wanting to? Okay, well, I mean, I just.
But, but at this point, you know, so what did you want for 308?
I want Ps all the way across. I just, because, you know, the whole town is covered, you know, as Jim said, and, and Chip just, you know, kind of confirmed that the whole town is covered by a primary aquifer, I mean, a primary and secondary aquifer overlay. And the fact that, and, and, and this is just my argument for it, is that is that it's not, you know, it's, it's homes, it's, you know, scattered, it's not such a concentrated kind of area. You know, we're not looking at large scale. That's, that's just my opinion.
All right. For now.
So Bob Marvel here, can I, can I add to that?
Yes, you can, Bob.
So, you know, accessory solar energy systems, we're talking about residential. We're talking about all throughout a, a wild estimate of 95% of it's going to be roof mounted solar. Not really developers, you, you know, unless it's a new house going up, that's, that's including solar systems. But I think that, you know, if, if a resident puts in a septic system or a pool, to Chip's point, you know, they have to go through the rigor of, of finding where the aquifer is. And I think that if they want to do ground mounted solar or something like that, then they should go through the same rigor for that. But, you know, I, I think that if we change either the primary or secondary for accessory solar, we, we're going to have a lot of situations where a resident who wants to do roof mounted solar, who happens to be sitting on a primary aquifer, is either not going to be allowed to do it or is going to be, you know, restricted by, well, not restricted, but have to, have to go through, you know, added review in order to, to get it done. And I think it, it, it's something we can probably avoid doing for now. And, and just tighten up how, what, what our requirements are on anything other than roof bounded on accessory solar.
Okay, so you're saying make them Ps as well?
I, I would think so, yeah.
Okay. All right.
But at the same time, at the same time, I don't want to lose sight of what Chip said about, you know, putting in the requirements that if, if accessory solar includes any kind of ground mounted, you know, we have to force them to, to ensure that, that, that installation does not impact the, the aquifer that may be below it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Bob. Council Hurst, were you going to comment?
Scott Billhurst, I just, off topic, but related to tonight, just like to ask Lisa, unless I missed it, did the, neither fire district got back to the town on, on the topic of solar, did they?
This is Lisa. The own, Mike Williams came in because the original mailing that went out to them must have gotten lost in the mail. That's the Ashway Fire District. But I provided him with the documentation and that was for about a week and a half ago. But I don't know if they're listening in or not. I have received nothing in writing from them. I've not received any emails from either district.
Yeah, I think the confusion, of course, is this, there's two entities, Ashway Volunteer Fire Association, Ashway Fire District, which is government entity, and another one is more of a private or semi-private organization. And I, I don't know, I think the whole Valley Wyoming district might be set up as one. I'm not sure. I like to be accurate, but anyways, I assume we have nothing from whole Valley Wyoming on that, that we, on this topic.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to know what I'm talking about and we want to use people as a resource and we value their input. It's important that we know whether we got a response or not. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So Steve, can we go through the definitions?
We sure can.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if, um, I have no problem reading these. Um, I, I, I know Jim spent a lot of time reading the last ones and probably tired of reading, but I, I have no problem going, going through and reading these definitions as we go. So, um, I, I will start here just for everybody to, to have a reference. I'm starting on page one.
I only have tonight's packet, so.
It's, if, you have a copy of it in there somewhere. Is that tonight's packet?
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's going to be in there, Scott. It's, um, you're going to see, um, you'll see the, the cover letter that says Ursulotites and Rich on it, and then following that you'll see a, um,
Oh, we're jumping around.
What's that?
I didn't realize we were jumping back to page one.
We were on four. I mean, just, uh, a, a lot of the definitions are going to carry over. So we, you know, if we discuss def- definitions, they might change in news tables. So we, so we're back on page one. I think you have it there, Scott.
I got it.
Council Gear, are you also have that?
I'm also.
Okay, excellent. Okay, draft amendments to the Town of Hopington's ordinance. Uh, the following definitions, uh, to be added are in blue and deleted would be read with a slash through them from section two. Section two definitions, accessory solar energy system, a solar energy system that is incidental and subordinate to the principal use as of the parcel or development and is either, one, entirely roof mounted or mounted on a solar canopy. And two, generates no more energy than one hundred percent of the energy that is necessary to support the principal uses of the parcel on which the solar energy system is located.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon.
I think we could end, if we had that discussion, I think we would end, um, on the first line after the word parcel, uses of the parcel and delete the rest of it.
Um, I, I would like to, um, on that one, um, I, I prefer that we do not delete it all. Um, uh, I would like, um, I would like to change a one hundred percent to a hundred and twenty-five percent. And the reason why I would like to do that is because I would like, you know, the homeowner to, um, be able to, you know, uh, they go and spend the money to put up a, a solar system on, on their roof. And, uh, you know, if they go and get a pool later on or, 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 or add something else that they may need more electricity for, um, at that time. I just, it, it's just kind of a, um, for me, my thought process, it's just kind of having some foresight on or.
Well, I didn't even, when I ended after the word parcel, I didn't even discuss what the percentage was. And I didn't discuss that I, I made it open so it could be either roof mounted or not.
Okay.
Roof mounted. So, you know, that's where I was.
Okay.
That's why I stopped after parcel.
Excellent. All right.
Am I making sense?
Oh, no, I understand where you're going with it. I'm just, um,
Council President, can I, can I ask a question?
You sure can, Bob.
So, and actually, uh, this question is going to be directed at Attorney Scores. Uh, just, I want to get clarification on that definition because as I read it again, what, the way I read it is that the accessory solar energy system is either entirely roof mounted or, or, or canopy, or it generates no more energy than one hundred percent. So what that means to me, the way I interpret that is if a resident, um, wanted to do something other than roof or solar, or, uh, I'm sorry, roof or canopy solar, then that would be, you know, presumably ground mounted would be, uh, a system that would then produce no more than one hundred percent of what the property needed.
Yes, uh, so I think what you'd have to do to, to, to achieve that goal would change the and right before the number two into an or. But if, if you made that change, um, that would allow ground mounted so long as it didn't generate more than a hundred percent. And it would also allow all entirely roof mounted systems.
Okay. All right. But the original intent of that definition was to specify that an accessory system would be either, uh, would be roof mounted or, uh, canopy mounted and would produce no more than one hundred percent.
Yeah, you, you know, that, that definition went through a couple of iterations. The, the original draft of this did allow for ground mounted accessory systems. But once you start allowing for ground mounted accessory systems, you need to have a way to ensure that, um, the ground mounted system doesn't become, uh, one of the primary uses of the parcel and it stays accessory. Um, so in, in one of the, in one of the original drafts of that definition, it did have an or. And the second subsection wasn't intended to limit the, um, uh, the scope of ground mounted accessory. Um, but if, if you don't want to allow ground mounted accessory, it might make sense just to eliminate the second clause and have any s- solar that's entirely roof mounted, be the only allowed accessory solar energy system. Or, but, but, but I would suggest if, if you are contemplating allowing ground mounted solar accessory, that you do have some type of way to, um, to quantify, um, when that goes from being an accessory use to a principal use. Otherwise, y- you might see a project that, um, a developer um, s- squeezes into the definition or makes an argument that it's accessory. But really the, their main goal is to get as much solar as possible.
So in that case, something like, uh, limiting the size of the panel surfaces.
Well, you know, I think if, if you did it to say, if you just changed the and to an or, um, that would allow ground mounted and it would put a pretty big restriction on, on what accessory could be because so long as you're not selling back to the grid, um, then you're not really, um, that, then no developer is gonna, gonna, um, there's not going to be development pressure, in my opinion, to, to, to try to, to sneak in a larger development as accessory use. Because the whole point of doing a, uh, large development is to sell back to the grid and make as much money as possible. So as, i- if you, if you limit the ground mounted, um, so that they're not selling energy back to the grid, I, I think that will in effect limit it to, um, tr- only the truly accessory, uh, solar energy systems.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I'm, I don't know, but I would suspect that even roof mounted solar, people, people who put, um, the solar on their roofs, I think that they go into that because they think that they're going to get, they might do more than a hundred percent of their uses, what I'm saying. They, they are selling back some of it to the, um, to the, to the, to the, the energy company. It's just not a lot, but.
Which I believe they're taxed on too, uh, some, some of the roof mounted, I know the people that sell back, they, they get a ten ninety-nine every year and are paying taxes on, on the stuff that they, they do sell back. So it's not like it's, um, you know, however, but, um,
And I definitely want to get rid of the, the solar canopy stuff, but anyway, um,
So this is Bob Marvel. So the s- the solar canopy is, I, I'm not really sure how that is officially defined. I know that, you know, we all assume that means, you know, canopy over a parking lot. But in a residence, does that mean, you know, uh, uh, the same thing? Does it, does it mean, uh, uh, you know, a shade over, over a parking space over your driveway?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I think we ought to get rid of the solar canopy part.
Hey, uh, Council Gear here, uh, Tom Plant, can you, can you weigh on, on, weigh on, on the question at hand? Jimmy still on?
Yeah, uh, Tom, uh, Jim Lampier, Tom Plant, exactly, um, what, uh, councilman did you want me to weigh in on? I mean, I, I, I can't tell you whether you, whether you should allow ground mounted or not, or, uh, canopies or not.
No, I'm not asking that, Jim. Wha- what would you, what would you describe as solar canopy? I know we talked about this last time, this parking garages, stuff like.
Well, I would, I would go to the next page in the definitions of the, uh, squ- um, SCOCO ordinance where solar canopy is defined as an elevated structure that hosts overhead solar panel installation to provide shade above a parking lot. So that seems to mention parking lots, but I don't know if you really wanted to, wanted to limit a canopy being over a parking lot per se. Could put a canopy anywhere in your yard, but. So I guess you could, if you want canopies, uh, you could define them any way you want. And if you don't, we can eliminate them. I mean, it'd be nice to get some consensus, uh.
I'm, 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 uh, Council Moppy here. I'm, I'm, uh, willing to strike, uh, solar canopy definition from this ordinance.
I'm, uh, I agree with you there, President, Mr. President.
Is there any other discussion about, uh, just so we can kind of move forward? I mean, because we're obviously heading this, but I mean, if something's further down the line, um, do we, are we in agreement about solar canopies? We were the other night about solar canopies. So I just want to kind of touch back on that. Bob, do you have any comment as far as your opinion on the solar canopy? Okay, Sharon?
Yeah, I think we should scratch the solar canopy, but we still haven't figured out the, the other part, the, what's left of that, uh, paragraph. We haven't figured it out yet.
So, so I'll jump in, this is Bob Marvel. I'll jump in and, and say that, you know, based on what Attorney Scores said, I think that if we now have it say, um, solar energy system that is incidental and subordinate to the principal uses of the parcel or development and is either, one, entirely roof mounted and, or I'm sorry, or, or two, generates no more energy than one hundred percent of the energy that is necessary to support the principal uses of the parcel, et cetera. So basically you're saying it's either roof mounted or if it's not roof mounted, then it cannot generate anything more than what is used for the parcel.
Okay. I'll go with that.
Attorney Scores, um, just, uh, does, are you reading what Bob's saying to be how he's interpreting it?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think that's, uh, I think that's a good revision. And I think that, um, I think that works with the rest of the ordinance. So, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, you know, I, I, I see a couple of hands here. I'm just going to let, you know, because there's not a big row of hands. There's just two, I, I'm going to allow them to, to speak. Carol, Carol DeRozers?
Hi, Carol DeRozers. Um, I am very uncomfortable with the thought of, um, entirely roof mounted or as someone who had spent probably hundreds of hours in, uh, rezone meetings for over two and a half years and as someone who is probably one of a thousand people who signed petitions against ground mounted solar, I would not want to see a ground mounted solar array in my neighbor's yard that I have to look at. I am adamantly opposed to, um, having to look at ground mounted solar in my residential neighborhood. So this is, um, upsetting to me that that would open the door for ground mounted solar, um, throughout residential neighborhoods.
Thank you. Um, Chip?
Hi, Chip Hale, Chase Hill wrote again. Um, the only, I, I'm generally fine with this. The only thing that I would just be cautious about is where you say that, um, they generate no more energy than one hundred percent of the energy that's necessary to support the principal uses. I feel like we should be adhering to like the, what National Grid says that number is. We don't want to be setting caps that are, um, you know, more importantly, above what is even allowable by National Grid. Um, so I, I, I'm not really sure how to word that for this, but I think we just want to be careful about setting and us setting a number when it's not necessarily up to the town to, to set that number. And I, I bring that up because in the past, we've looked into potentially doing roof mounted solar. And I, from, from what I understand is they use your current history of energy consumption. And that's your, that's, and then they gauge the size of your solar panels based on that generation. So if I only use, you know, let's say one mega, megawatt, I can't actually fill my roof if I'm going to generate more than one megawatt a year, which also means I couldn't make a solar canopy that's huge if I, if that is going to, um, exceed, uh, what we actually use in our house for a year, right? So in the way that works is in the winter where I generate less energy from my panels, I'm not covering my usage, but in the summer, I'm going to generate more than my usage and it balances out through a credit system, right? So National Grid, from the way I understand it, they don't really want to get transactional with the resident and the individual level, um, solar arrays. And the way they do that is by looking at your bill and saying, okay, you generate this much. This is how much you're allowed to do. So we can kind of let National Grid set some of these standards for us. And that's, you know, I, and I, and what that allows us to do, I think, in the big picture of this ordinance is to evolve as potentially National Grid's needs or whoever our, our electricity provider is going to be in the future. Right now, they may say you can only do a hundred percent, but in a few years, they may say, well, we'd really like to allow residential people to fill their roof if that's possible, you know, we'll accommodate that. So, um, I, 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 I was trying to read a little bit about this while we're talking. It's, it's not super straightforward on the National Grid page, but it does seem like that's something we could look into is exactly how do they handle residential roof mounted solar? And then to get to Sharon's point and Carol's point, um, if it is limited, if you're limited by that capacity, then your solar array, whether it's on your roof or a canopy thing, would be limited by the, um, accessory need. That's all.
Thank you, Chip. Listen, I, I'm going to give one more person the chance to talk, um, here on, on, on this topic. But I, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, the town council here is, A, this isn't written stone. We have more workshops, we have more discussions, we're welcome to your emails, your phone calls. But as a council, um, we need to move forward with this. We need to, to make progress, whether you think the progress is not good or it's good. Um, we welcome your, your comments. Um, but for the sake of getting our job done as, you know, as we see fit, that's the direction that I would like to go. So that's, that's the. Carol, did you want to say something? I think you're still up. Do you have your hand up?
Nope, sorry.
Okay. All right, there's no more hands up, so we will, we will move forward with this. Um, so a- as a council, did we, um, are we satisfied with the definition that we have before us at this point? Bob? I mean, we could, we, we can discuss it, that, that's, that, that's why we're here. I mean, we're here for, for input and concerns. I mean, we can talk about it, I mean. I mean, we could touch back at it too. I mean, we've got, I mean, plenty of definitions here, y- you know what I mean? So.
Yeah, I, I, it's, this is a difficult one because there, I've, I've seen a lot of different definitions of accessory solar, and I, I don't think that it's easy to, to. to define or, or come down to a specific definition that, that's going to uh, make everyone comfortable. I know to, to Carol's point, I, I wouldn't want to see, uh, you know, ground mounted solar panels in my neighbor's yard either. But if I had, uh, you know, a, a very old house that, you know, I, I needed solar, but I didn't know if the roof could handle it. I, I don't know how I would, would, you know, worry about that. So, I mean, I, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I kind of, you know, if, you know, I, I would obviously think that, you know, if, you know, um, as Attorney Squares had talked about, you know, developers taking advantage of the definition of ground mounted. I mean, we as a council can come up with sizing requirements. We, we can set the guidelines, set the limits as far to, you know, I mean, if you're in an R1, that's probably not a good spot to put your, you know, a ground mounted solar. I mean, or if you're in a cluster development, I mean, you don't want, I mean, that's just that, that, that just doesn't make sense. You know, if, if you're an RF R80 and you own 30 acres and you want, and you know, and you have a, you know, to, to Bob's point, if you have a house that's in the historic district or, you know, if it's, if it's, you know, 300 years old and, and you really don't want to put a solar panels on your roof of your 300 year old house. I mean, there's, there's guidelines we can follow. There's, you know, I mean, we can make it by special permit, not, not permit it everywhere, you know? I mean, we can put stipulations on it and just, I mean, we're not, you know, giving them carte blanche to just put it in their front yard, put it here. I mean, you know, by, you know, giving a, um, you know, a, a, you know, requiring it to, you know, have a special permit. I mean, uh, uh, there adds a level of, uh, scrutiny to it. So, um, I think to just in, you know, no, I mean, agree or disagree, um, I think that it's a, it's obviously something we need to discuss. I mean, because not, we can't paint everything with a broad brush all the time. I mean, I just think there are scenarios and situations, you know, there's, there's language we can put in it to limit the size, you know, limit the scope, you know, and, and these are just examples. You know, if, you know, you don't, you can't put ground mounted on it if you don't have, you know, 120,000 square feet of property, you know, and, and if you do and you have to, you know, you can't put it in your front yard. You can't put it, you know, in, in, in certain spots. I mean, that's just kind of where I'm at with it. I think there should be, you know, um, circumstances where it could potentially be allowed with, you know, with a proper sitting and, and, and a proper scrutiny. So that's, that's where I sit on, 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 on this particular subject.
So this is Bob Marvel again. I, I'm, I'm fine with the, the definition as we are looking to amend it um, based on, you know, what you've said. The, the only other change that I would, uh, offer up and I think this goes back to the last workshop is, um, where it says principal use and, and there's an S in parentheses, so principal uses. I would probably offer to remove the S because I think, uh, as Jim Lamphier, or actually I think it was, uh, the, uh, the planning board's attorney that pointed out, uh, there's only one principal use of a property, not multiple. So there's, there's two places in here where, uh, principal use has a parentheses S after it. I would, I would offer up to remove the S.
Uh, Councilman, if I could, uh, just jump in there for a moment on that principal use issue. Um, I'm not crazy about using the word principal to define so many things in the ordinance because it's, it's not a term that's defined in the zoning enabling act and, uh, while I agree that common sense says that there's only one principal use on a lot, I, I didn't find any black and white answer to that question. I think if you look at, there's accessory use is a defined term and it talks about an accessory use is something that's an accessory to the principal use. Uh, but there's no definition for principal use. And I would hate to see someone take advantage of the fact that we, you know, that we use the word principle in there um, and that there, it's not defined. So I don't know. I mean, we could define the term principal use to make it clear. But I, I wasn't crazy about using that as the like defining term. Um, I saw that. Um, I'm not sure which vert, there are several versions of the ordinance that had come and gone and there was, I don't remember which one, but one of them used principle quite a bit to define things and I didn't think that was, I, I understand what the intention is, but I don't know if that's the best term to use.
Okay. Bob, you're referring to, I mean, you're not referring to the table that was presented in, in Jim's notes from, uh, from last meeting? You're talking about the definitions? Are you going to the definition?
I'm talking about the definitions, yes. I'm talking about the definition for accessory solar energy system.
Okay, all right. No, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify. That's all.
Yeah.
But yeah, that, that issue did come up about whether there could be more than one principal use. Uh, I, I did look into that. I, I talked to uh, several of my colleagues about it and there doesn't seem to be a definition for principal. So if there was one, it would have to be one that you put in the ordinance.
I mean, based on our new table, our, our district use table, I mean, I kind of doesn't, I mean, we're not, you know, other than, um, the potential of a special use in the manufacturing area um, for, uh, contaminated. Um, I mean, it doesn't look like we're going to be allowing any um, any, any use that would be the only use occupying a parcel, right? So with that, I mean, again, I mean, if, if I'm wrong, I mean, does principal solar system energy system, principal solar energy system be even belong in, in the definitions here or?
I, well, I'm, I'm just trying to re, that was.
So I understand.
The last workshop and, and that's, that's, um, that's my feedback on that, uh,
Okay.
issue. Um, I mean, I, I don't know if it's really my place to suggest an alternative, uh, way of drafting the ordinance, but I, 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 I would use caution using the word principle to define things.
Okay.
So this is Bob Marvel again. May, maybe what we do is we just take out the word principle of, out of that definition and it would be, uh, accessory solar energy system would be a solar energy system that is incidental and subordinate to the uses of the parcel or development and so on. So instead of principle, it's just uses.
Uh, well, I'm sorry, maybe I'm creating confusion that didn't need to be created. I think that if, if we use the, there's a definition for accessory use that is in the zoning enabling act. And I think if we follow that definition, we're in good shape. I'm talking about when we were defining the other, like when we were talking about the primary use of the land would be a big solar field and we were calling that or defining that as principal uh, use. But, uh, I, I did hear you bring up the issue of principal use and I wanted to interject there. I don't think, as long as I think that our definition tracks the for, the definition of accessory use tracks the statute's definition, um, which does say it's an accessory to the principal use. Um, I guess the concern I have is, is the other way when we were defining the bigger projects as, as principal use. And I thought we could find a better way to, to, to define those.
Okay, all right.
Does, does that clear that up?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so are, are we good with this? We can move forward. I can read the next definition here?
Yes.
All right, next up, contaminated site solar energy system. A principal solar energy system located on a contaminated site pending remediation or a remediated and restricted contaminated site. A contaminated site solar energy system shall be reviewed as a major land development if it would occupy 40,000 square feet of area or more inclusive of interro and panel collector, panel slash collector spacing, spacing. A contaminated site solar energy system shall be reviewed as a minor land development if it would occupy less than 40,000 square feet of area inclusive of interro and, and panel slash collector spacing.
Mr. President, if I could just, um, uh, make a suggestion on this definition.
Please do.
And this is in response to the comment of your town planner at incorporating some of the, um, uh, some of the suggestions and in his draft, which, which I actually, I, I thought was a good suggestion. My, my suggestion for this definition would be to, um, put a period after major land development a, and then just strike the rest so that it would read uh, a principal solar, uh, contaminated site solar energy system, a principal solar energy system located on a contaminated site pending remediation or remediate and restricted contamination site. And then second, second, second sentence, a contaminated site solar energy system shall be reviewed as a major land development, period.
You don't, oh, can I ask, can we get rid of the word principal?
Uh, I think, I think you can do that. Uh, you could do that, just.
Just that it's a solar energy system located?
Yeah, you could definitely do that.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with you about the dev, ending after development.
Thank you. I agree as well.
Yes, Council Mop, and I, I agree with that. Anyone else?
I agree with it.
Good to go? Okay. Bob, did you get that?
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, uh, and next up, contaminated site pending remediation. A property that has been identified and confirmed by, uh, RIDAM as being contaminated through an issuance of a letter, letter of responsibility, but which has not yet been remediated to the satisfaction of RIDAM.
Mr. President, I don't, I don't see any changes we need to make this one.
Okay.
What page is this? You're on definitions page, one nineteen.
All right, not hearing any objections to that, um, that will stay. Next up, ground mounted solar energy system. A energy system that is structurally appended to the ground and is not supported to a structure or a building. Any objection?
This president, I think we, uh, we can, we can keep this one as it is.
Okay.
For the moment.
Go ahead, Bob.
Council, Council President, I think, uh, when we reviewed this before, I think you pointed out that, uh, the way it read, uh, the end there, it's, uh, appended to the ground is not supported to a structure. Maybe should be, uh, is not attached to a structure.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I have in my notes here, it is not attached by a structure.
Attached to.
Oh, I'm sorry, attached to a structure.
Okay.
Any, any, uh, discussion or, or comments on that change, changing the word supported to attached?
Good.
Okay, up next, major solar energy system land development project. A principal. What's that?
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Oh, no, you're fine.
So I, just, um, uh, after listening to the discussion about the use table, I think that this definition and the dex, next definition, um, don't really fit into the ordinance anymore. Um, and so I would suggest, um, coming up with another definition that's intended that would just be, and maybe you call a principal use solar energy system, or maybe you just call it, um, uh, solar energy systems and the definition could just be any solar energy system that is not a contaminated site solar energy system or an accessory solar energy system.
But why do we have to talk about it at all?
So I think, uh, the, the only point of, of, um, sorry about that. The, the only point of mentioning it would be so that in the use table, you could put a no to, to make clear that all other solar energy systems are, are not allowed. If you're not contaminated site or accessory.
Correct.
It just makes clear that everything else is not allowed.
So it's a solar energy system? Um, that is not a contaminated or accessory system?
That, that would be my suggestion, uh, to replace the next two definitions if, if that's agreeable with, to the council.
And that's because they're no longer allowed in our district table?
Right, and that way.
But anyway.
Yeah. Or, um, yeah, and you could, you could just call it, um, you might even, yeah. So it'd just be a, a stand in use category to make clear that everything else is not allowed.
Bob, did you get that or did you understand that?
Yeah, I do, yeah. I definitely do. I, I, I think, uh, it, it goes back to the land use table where we have two entries, uh, what is it, three oh six and three oh seven? Where we could remove those and replace them with one for whatever we call this one and it'll be not allowed across the board. Um, and I think this is where, uh, Jim Lamphier had a definition of, um, principal solar energy system. And I think, uh, to, to Attorney Cyclops' point, we probably should call it something other than principal, but, uh, I'm looking up his definition right now. Oh, he had it as commercial. Um, and so I can read, I can read Jim's definition and you can see if this is uh, acceptable. Uh, commercial solar energy system, a solar energy system that produces more than 100% of the energy that is necessary to support the other uses occupying the parcel. These are systems whose main purpose is to generate energy for sale back into the energy grid system rather than being consumed on site.
Where are you, where are you reading that?
I was reading that from, uh, a different document, um, from, uh.
Um, Mr. President and Councilman Marvel, um, you know, I, I think, um, I think that, uh, Jim Lamphier's definition, um, I, 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 I get the point and I think it was a, a good, um, the point of it was good, but, um, uh, personally, I kind of like, if, if it's going to be a flat out, uh, prohibited use and you're only going to allow solar if it fits into one of these two, uh, specifically defined categories. I think the easier way to do it would be, um, just have a definition that says anything else. And that way, uh, you don't have the potential for a developer to come in and say, well, I'm not quite this, I'm not quite this, so you have to fit me in one of them and you should fit me in the one that allows it. So if you just have addition, definition that says anything other than our two specifically defined, um, types of solar energy systems. And, uh, just prohibit that as, as you were discussing with the use table, um, that would just make clear that if you're not accessory and if you're not contaminated site, then you're not allowed. Okay.
So what's that the definition for? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm just getting a little, uh, because there's so much, you know, discussion going on about this. And I, I know we're discussing, um, you know, striking major solar energy land development project and the minor solar energy land development project and replacing it with something. That's, that's what we're discussing here. I mean, I'm sorry to, to sound like I'm, I'm sleeping here, but I don't think it's that. I think it's, it's just kind of confusing. Um, so we're going to sub, we're, we're going to find a definition and what's the, the word that we're trying to find? What, what do we?
So it, and, and I'm, I'm, Mr. President, I'm just taking notes as we go along and, um, the term I used was principal use solar energy system to replace, uh, major and minor.
Okay.
Just like your planner did.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to use a different term, you could.
Okay.
You know, but basically that would just be a stand in term.
Okay, I got you. Thank you for the clarification.
And, and also for clarification, whatever you call this other thing, that's also what's gonna be on the table, right?
Yes, that's, that's correct, uh, uh, Councilwoman Davis, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, if I could just interject, if, um, if we're gonna, uh, eliminate minor and major systems, why do we even need to define this other type of system if it's not allowed to begin with? Are we, are we adding something in there? Because it's my understanding that if a particular use is not explicitly stated in the ordinance, it's not allowed, so.
So you're just saying, get rid of those two lines?
Yeah, if, I, yes, I, I would say that if the only systems that we're gonna consider going forward are accessory systems and contaminated site systems, I don't see why we have to even define anything else.
Okay.
Unless, unless you wanna put some sort of a definite, definition in there like Attorney Squires suggested, and say, and say, "Anything other than an accessory or contaminated site is specifically not allowed", that certainly makes a statement, I guess.
Would you have an opinion to that, um, Mr. Squires, as far as?
Um, you know, I, I, I do agree with, um, uh, Mr. Lamphier's statement that, um, as a general rule, any use not specifically listed on the use table is, is a prohibited use. My thought is, is just for the sake of clarity, since if, if it's the intention of the town council to, to prohibit solar energy systems in town that don't meet these definitions, I think it couldn't hurt not only to say it by, not, not only to say it through silence by not having it on the table, but to say it explicitly, um, and that way there, there could be no confusion about it, that if you're not in definition A or definition B, you are not allowed. So that was my thought.
Okay.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, if that's, if that's the direction, and I don't, I don't disagree with that at all, we could probably use the definition that I suggested, we could call, now, again, if you don't wanna use the word principal, maybe we could say, uh, photovoltaic solar energy systems, which is basically what we have right now, PSES, so that's consistent there, we could say photovoltaic solar energy system, and we could define it as a solar ge- a solar energy system whose main purpose is to generate energy for sale back into the energy grid system rather than being consumed on the site, is prohibited in all zones. So you could make it as clear as you want. Or you could even put that use in the table, and just put ends right across the, right across the row, that would, that would do it too.
Bob Marvel here, um, I, I, uh, agree with Attorney Squires also, I, I think that defining it and specifically putting it in the use table with, uh, ends across the board is, is certainly gonna make me feel more comfortable that we've accomplished what we're trying to do. Um, and I think that a simple, um, as, as Attorney Squires mentioned, a, a simple definition of, you know, we can call it commercial solar energy system also, we, we say commercial sm- solar energy system is any solar energy system that is not either an accessory or a contaminated site solar energy system.
I mean, could we use the words industrial too? I mean, or, or manufact- I mean.
I think you're getting the, you're confusing, that would be confusing.
So, so let me just step back up for one second. So if we're gonna strike these definitions out, right? So then they, are you saying that they shouldn't be in the district use table, and that we should just?
No, no. No, I'm just saying you shouldn't use the same words as you have, um, categories. In other words, if you call it commercial, there's a commercial, uh, column. If you call it, so, I like, maybe industrial might be better, but just make sure there's no industrial column, and I, I, you know what I mean? You, when you use the word commercial, I think people get confused. So, I don't like the word com- commercial. I'm not excited about the photovoltaic thing, which is what we already have, as, as number four eighty-six. I'm not exactly, I, I think that's gonna be a little confusing too. Um, so I, I guess, if you just, if you just said solar energy system land development project like he has in there, but take the word major and minor out, and then define what a solar energy system land deba- development project is, maybe that'd be easier, I don't know.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, how about, uh, solar energy producing facility?
Yes. I like that.
Jim, can you say that one more time?
Yes, solar energy producing facility.
And define it, yeah.
With the definition, yep.
Whose main purpose is to, to sell back to, to the energy, to the utility, and then that is where you make it all end, right?
Yes, yep.
Mr. President, if I could just, uh, comment on that point.
Please do.
Uh, I, I, I'm a little concerned that if you, if you define the use by its main purpose, it leaves in room for a developer to say, "Well, I have some other purpose, um, and because my purpose is a little different than the usual purpose, and this is only a secondary purpose to sell back to the grid, um, therefore I don't fit this definition." So, my, my thought is just define it as everything else that's not accessory or contaminated site. That, that would be my, that way you're covering any type of full, uh, any type of solar energy system, um, that doesn't fit into one of the two categories that you're, uh, considering allowing.
Okay.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I like that. I like it.
Marvel, I like it also, and, you know, in, in kind of keeping with, uh, uh, you know, a label on it, we, we could even call it something as simple as large scale solar energy system.
I like that too.
So what are you, were you gonna repeat that?
So, yeah, so I'll repeat the definition, and, and again, for clarity, this, this one definition replaces major and minor in the definitions, and also this label will replace the two in the land use table, major and minor, and will have ends all the way across. So the definition, and I think, where did I go with it? Large scale solar energy system, any solar energy system that is not either, one, an accessory solar energy system, or, two, a contaminated site solar energy system.
Okay.
Councilman Moffett, I, that, that sounds pretty good, Bob.
Okay, I've made note of that, and I will make note of that in the table.
Just let me know when you're up to speed, Bob, and I'll, uh.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, um, so what, what's the next definition here? We're, I mean, principal solar energy system no longer has a, or?
Um, Mr. President, if I could suggest, I, I think you're correct, that's principal solar energy system, uh, no longer requires a definition, um, since all other solar is lumped into the negative of the other two that were defined, so.
Okay.
I would suggest maybe just striking that.
Okay. All right, up next, remediated and restricted cont- uh, contamination site. A property, one, that has been identified and confirmed by RIDEM as having a contained hazardous material contamination, two, on which, uh, remediation activities were conducted to the satisfi- satisfaction of RIDEM, as documented within a letter of compliance, or an interim letter of compliance, and three, for which RIDEM has required the use of the property to be restricted through an environmental land use restriction. Any objection?
I have no objection, this is Bob.
Council giving, I think we should leave it as it is, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, next up, roof mounted solar energy system. A solar energy system that is structurally appended to the roof of a building or a structure. Any objection?
Did you wanna, uh, did you wanna slot in the word attached, vice is appended, or?
How do we have it, um, do we have a ta- how is it labeled to, uh, attached? Yeah, I, I, that's probably the, um, Bob, would you wanna strike out appended and put attached?
Yes.
I mean, so would be attached to the roof, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have the same wording in the other definition, and like, sake of consistency. All right, we have, um, we have stricken, uh, solar canopy, so, um, next we have, and, and again, um, I guess solar energy system is just the definition here. Solar energy system, the equipment and requisite hardware that provide and are used for collecting, transferring, converting, storing, or using incident solar energy for water heating, space heating, cooling, generating electricity and offloading set electricity to the grid, or other, of, or other applications that would otherwise require the use of a conventional source of energy, such as petroleum products, natural gas, manufactured gas, or electricity pru- produced from a non-renewable resource. This shall include photovoltaic arrays and installations that utilize ground mounted systems. A solar energy system when the principal use of a parcel shall be deemed to be a manufacturing use. So, that's probably to be struck.
Well, I don't see why we wanna strike that.
Yeah, I don't think we're striking it.
No, that's a really good definition right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the, the only, this is Bob Marvel, I think the only change we noted was, um, down near the bottom, uh, where it says, uh, where do I start? Conventional source of energy such as petroleum products, natural gas, manufactured gas, or electricity produced for a non-renewable source, probably should be from.
Yeah, that's why I, I read it that way in my notes, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to read off a clean copy here, so I can read it as it's written.
So I'll ma- I'll make note of that change.
Okay.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, I just wanna mention, um, I, I believe in the first line of that definition, we had requisite hardware and structures.
Yep.
That provide.
Yep.
Think that's important.
Yep.
And then we had a couple of commas in the last line, too, solar energy system, comma.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I, I, I think you might, this is, uh, Steve, the, uh, solicitor, I, I think you might be referring to, I had made a comment to, um, Mr. Moffett, that I thought that the last sentence should be a solar energy system, comma, when the principal use of a parcel, comma, shall be deemed to be a manufacturing use.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
Page, page three of the definition, so page three. Uh, next definition, solar energy system operator. The agent or entity that conducts the daily operation and maintenance of the solar energy system under contractual agreement with the solar energy system owner.
Mr. President, uh, if, if I could just interject, I think this definition, and perhaps the next definition, are more relevant to, um, uh, the larger scale solar development that this, uh, much of this ordinance addresses, uh, which, if, if you're gonna strike that and prohibit it, I don't think that these are really, uh, never mind, I'll, I'll backtrack on that, they're not really applicable to accessory uses. They could still be applicable to, um, contaminated sites.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll backtrack on that, I apologize.
Mr. President, I'd say we, uh, we keep both definitions.
I agree, um.
I agree.
Okay. All right, um. All right, um, it's about twenty minutes to ten here, um, I'm not sure if, um, if that may be a good stopping point, um, if, if we feel we should stop here and then just tackle, you know, the rest of it moving forward, um, because, I mean, some of this is gonna, I mean, obviously we have to go through it, but, you know, uh, due to our, due to some of our definition changes, I mean, minor systems is, is no longer in, in here. Um, I, I would like to take a, uh, a poll on, on, on the council and see where they stand on that.
Yeah, I think it's time to wrap it up, we were here early tonight.
It's about three, uh, three hours, it's, uh, what, six thirty versus?
Bob, do you, Sharon?
That's fine.
Yeah, this is Bob, I think this is actually a really good, uh, point to stop and let people digest. You know, I'll, I'll finish up, as I said, the noted copy, and, um, you know, we can distribute the noted copy, and then prior to the next workshop, people will be able to read and digest these notes and understand where we're going with it. So, when we get to the, to the meat of it, it'll be, uh, I think, a lot more meaningful.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, Sharon, go ahead.
Of, of, of Attorney Squires. Um, why did you feel it was necessary to add the, the category contaminated site? What was your thinking behind that?
So, you know, I guess, it's, we were thinking that that we wanted to come with a proposal that not only, um, said where we thought solar shouldn't be allowed, which was definitely a large motivating factor, that we didn't think it should be allowed in the residential zones. We also thought it might be, um, uh, appropriate to offer where we thought it could be allowed, um, especially because I think when we started drafting this ordinance, we weren't sure what the makeup of, of the council would look like, and what their policy concerns would be. And so the cons- I think a consensus was, um, the type of places where it's appropriate are the contaminated sites where you really can't do anything else, um, if you have the right limits and controls on it. Um, so that was the thinking behind it, um, but, you know, obviously there are, um, multiple sides. multiple sides to any issue, and there was one, um, attendee that spoke tonight, uh, Mr. Hale, who, who kind of thought that might be a bad thing to allow solar in a, um, contaminated site. So of course, if, if that's the, if that's where the council comes down on it, um, you know, we wouldn't push back on that, but it was just some discussion of, you know, what, not only were we going to say what we, where we didn't think, didn't think solar should be, but, you know, where do we think it, where do we, did we think it should be? And that was what we came up with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would like to, uh, discuss, um, a, obviously a schedule for the next workshop. Um, next, does next Monday work for everybody? I don't know, um, uh, next Monday is the 25th.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it works for me, it's, Bob.
Yep.
Counselor Gary, does that work for you?
Works for me, what time? 6:30, 7?
Um, um, does 6:30 work for everybody? I mean, is that fine to kind of get the show on the road, or? Or, I mean, I'm sorry, I, I should also ask, ask, ask the attorney, I apologize.
That, that's, that's all right. Um, uh, I, I do have a similar issue that I had to, on the 11th, in that, um, I, uh, I have, um, a childcare issue in that, um, my wife and I both are municipal attorneys, and she has a meeting that night, so I have to put the kids to bed, and we're not having babysitters because of COVID, so.
Sure.
I, I could get here for 7:30, uh, but then I also have another, um, issue where I need to switch Zoom meetings and go to a, um, a, um, uh, an East Greenwich Council meeting for an executive session later in the night. Um, but I, I could, I could attend and, um, uh, uh, participate just probably after 7:30, and then only up to a certain point, but, you know, I think, um, I've been taking notes in red line, but as long as Councilman Marvel is also taking notes, I think that should be fine. And, you know, if, if you want to ask me questions when I log in, uh, at 7:30, I could do that as well.
Um, how do the other, other council members feel about that? The?
Scott Billhurst, I just, I'm concerned about the practicality of, of doing that, because usually, uh, in any of this debate, and it's really been long, and a lot of minutes have been, it should be, uh, just the flow of conversation. I don't know if it's really practical to do it. Whatever the majority of the council wants is fine, but I just, I'm concerned, what?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We're just, no, you're fine.
No, it's just, I'm, I was just concerned about the practicality of doing it this way, but whatever the majority of the council wants, it's okay with me.
If there's a conflict with the, with the, with the council or board, it's what you would do this.
Okay, Bob, did you, you look like you might want to say something, or?
No, I, I was wondering what, uh, Councilman Bill Hurst's, uh, suggestion would be. I mean, he, he had mentioned that he, he was wondering about
The practicality of something?
Yeah, yeah, so I-
I mean, the practicality of the lawyer's situation, because usually what these hearing, uh, what this discussion have demonstrated is that, uh, he's an integral part of the discussion, so we're here and we're talking about different things, and he's not going to be able here at certain times. I mean, I'm just talking from a practical point of view.
Right, no, that makes sense.
He's so crucial that I don't personally think we should do it under those circumstances. We'll come up with another time. But whatever the majority of the council wants, but I'm just trying to be, I just don't think it's a practical way to handle it. That's my view. Others might not agree with it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I, I understand. I, I just didn't understand it at first, but I, that's a really good point, and I agree with you.
Mr. President, Jim Lamphier, Town Planner, can I throw out a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, in light of the changes that we made tonight, which were pretty, you know, pretty significant, and, and may have some implications for the remainder of the ordinance, uh, we could be deleting quite a bit of material. So I was wondering, uh, if Mr. Squares could take a look at the ordinance from the point where we left off tonight and give us his, uh, suggestion for further amendments, maybe underline, strike through version. Maybe the council could begin with what he gives us for discussion at the next workshop.
I, I could, I could certainly do that. Um, and I'd also note, um, you know, the, my availability of the rest of that week, I, I'm open on the 27th, the 28th, and the 29th. If, um, if, uh, you'd prefer to do that, and I could certainly before that, try to re, rework this, because I think you're, I think Mr. Lamphier is right that with, uh, with the major and minor use categories no longer being allowed in any zone, it drastically reduces the scope of this ordinance. Um, and, and a lot of stuff is gonna, would just come out and wouldn't need to be discussed because it's not applicable anymore.
If, if I could just add too, that, uh, Jim Lamphier again, um, I think, I think that something like this could really serve to save us a lot of time in the long run, where we get to public hearings and everything, if we, if we know in advance what, uh, the applicant is willing to accept.
Okay, so, so with that being said, is that, um, so what Jim was proposing, is that something that you're fi- uh, fine with, uh, Mr. Squares?
Uh, yeah, I, I could definitely do that. That, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I, I, I think so too. I mean, it kind of gives you, you know, us, us your input, um, also. So I, I, I'm agreement. Um, I, I think i- if we follow that process that, that Jim suggested, and that Attorney Squares is, uh, is willing to fulfill, um, I see no reason why we can't have a workshop meeting on the 25th of January.
Steven, this is Lisa.
Yes, Lisa.
Will that give him enough time to provide that to you on the 25th? Or did you want to consider scheduling it for the 27th?
I'm fine with the 27th too. If, if all the council members are fine with the 27th, I'm fine.
27th is good, Mr. Rob.
I, I have a council, I have a Kingston Congregational Church Council meeting. Sorry, I'm the treasurer, so I got to be there.
What about the 28th?
Is it the 27th?
Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday.
What about the 28th, Sharon? Thursday?
The 28th is good.
The 28th is, uh, is the Republican Town Committee, and we're supposed to organize, so hopefully, uh, we'll have to, uh, we just have to come up with the best meeting, and if one of us can't come there, that so be it. But the town, political parties, Town Committee is supposed to be organized in January of odd years, and this is the January of an odd year. Normally, the Hopkins Republicans meet on the fourth Thursday, and I'm the chairman. Thank you.
So are you saying you can't be here Thursday? Is that what you're saying?
I absolutely won't be here on the fourth Thursday unless I can't get the Republicans together. Thank you. That's a legal requirement of our island law.
Mr. Uh, Mr. President, if I, if I could maybe suggest-
Why don't, why don't you try for the 27th, and I'll, and I'll just, um, submit my report to the coun, to, to the, my church council. So why don't we try for the 27th?
Are we all in agreement with the 27th? Um, is there any objection to the 27th? Does, does 6:30 work for you, Attorney Squares?
That, uh, that, um, does work for me on that. Yes, it does. That works.
Okay, so 6:30, January 25th, we will schedule a workshop to con, or, uh, to can- continue this workshop. 27th, I apologize, 27th of January at 6:30, we will continue this workshop.
Okay.
And, uh, I would just ask, uh, uh, Ms. Cook Martin, if, uh, what, uh, what the deadline, she'd like to have this, um, revised draft submitted to her so she can circulate it in advance of the, um, 27th Council Meeting.
The town council receives a packet every week, so, um, they will receive one, and one will be prepared on the 22nd. I don't know if you can have it ready for that time or not.
I, I think I can do that. I think I can do that.
Okay. And I want clarification that the town council would like this posted on the website.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Lisa?
Yep.
I've been mine. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Excellent, all right. Um, if, if we're all set, I, I would like to adjourn this, uh, this, um, workshop meeting. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.